I am very happy to call everyone to order here, and even though I'm probably the one that's the most giddy and out of order, but good luck with that to the rest of the team. It's been a while since I've been in the chair seat, so please offer me some patience as I manage us through this. First up, I would like to acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District operates on the traditional territories of the seashell and the Squamish First Nations, and we're very grateful to be here today. We have an agenda in front of us, and before we adopt the agenda, I'm just going to ask if there's any additions or anything that needs to be moved around, or anything from staff, anything from directors to add in? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, please. So move Director McMahon, seconded Director Tyes, all those in favor? Thank you, motion carries, and before we begin, I'm going to ask for a motion to receive all reports and delegation materials, and no communications, but if I can have that motion, please. Thank you, Director Seeger, seconded Director Beamish, all those in favor? Thank you. So first up on our agenda today, we have Daniel Haig from Stantec, and it's regarding our community greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Staff, did you want to introduce Mr. Haig, or go right into, we can go right into Mr. Haig? Okay, Daniel, whenever you're ready, please unmute and off you go.
Good morning, thank you for having me, I'm going to share my screen here. Can you see my PowerPoint slide?
Yes, Daniel, we've got it up here on the big screen, so go ahead.
Great, so good morning, my name is Daniel Haig. I'm obviously with Stantec Consulting, I've been with Stantec since 2009, but working in the climate change and sustainability space for about 20 years. Got about a 15-minute presentation for you folks on the GHG emissions inventory work that we completed with the regional district. In terms of my agenda for today's presentation, I wanted to touch base on context for climate action, you know, sort of leading up to why we're doing this, talk about the methodology that we used, go over the 2019 inventory results, talk about some data gaps and sort of recommendations moving forward to improve the greenhouse gas inventory, and then naturally open the floor to any questions. So the context for climate action, I just wanted to stop, I'd like to stop around this and just note that we are truly in a climate crisis. Climate is changing, obviously, the impacts are more severe than what we've anticipated. The heat dome, we see the flooding, we see wildfires, we see the crazy storm that happened towards Ontario, Quebec. And what's really concerning for us that work in the climate change space-
Daniel, I'm just going to stop you for a second, we have something going on with the sound. If you can, I don't know if you have a microphone or something that you can, it's just, we're just checking with our IT as well, but you're going in and out, we can hear you, but it's just, it's, the volume is a little wonky, so I don't know-
No, I, I'll try and talk louder.
Okay, perfect, that would be great, thank you, and we'll deal with things on our end as well, so thank you, Daniel. Sorry, keep going.
Okay, so basically, for those of us that work in the climate change space, we do a lot of climate forecasting, and what we're seeing is the impacts, the projected impacts and projected changes are happening about a decade earlier than what we've anticipated. So naturally, at the global scale, things are going to get worse unless we start taking more drastic action. And the actions, really what we need to do is adapt, mitigate and adapt to the climate effects of climate change. So mitigation is where we reduce and eliminate greenhouse gas emissions, and that's what we're going to talk about today. On the other side of that piece is adaptation, and that's where we recognize that we are locked into a climate trajectory. Things are going to change even if we stop reducing emissions now. So we need to adapt to those effects, so climate change mitigation adaptation sort of come hand in hand. In terms of GHG, so the greenhouse gas mitigation, there's sort of a, I like to follow a six-step planning process and to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions, goes from calculating, forecasting, modeling to planning and reporting. So the project, our project focus today was, with the SCRD was around calculating and forecasting emissions. So in terms of calculating emissions, you know, our standard approach is to determine the boundary, identify the different greenhouse gas emission sinks and sources, ensure that process, analyze the data, identify gaps, develop assumptions, and at the end of the day, you're, you have a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. The next step of the planning process is to forecast those emissions. So you take your base emissions and you look to the future to see how things are going to change in terms of population, employment, new communities, that sort of thing, and that's what drives your GHG emissions. After this stage, and you know, this is what we're setting the SCRD up to do, is to start modeling what actions can be undertaken to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There's lots of different ways you can do this, through scenario analysis, to using sustainable return on investment. What's commonly deployed is sort of a level impact, level of effort assessment, but basically, what you're trying to do is figure out what actions you need to do to reduce emissions and how you can bundle those. From there, you can develop and set your greenhouse gas reduction targets. Best practice now is achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, or even better, 2040. And by net zero, what I'm talking about is 90% of GHG emissions are eliminated, with recognizing that there'll be roughly around 10% emissions that are residual and cannot be eliminated, but they can be neutralized either through sort of technologies such as direct carbon capture or through nature-based solutions like investing in parklands and reforested and using wetlands and that sort of thing to get to that net zero. Once you've set a target, it's really about packaging up those actions, putting them in a plan and reporting, and sort of monitoring that progress, so sort of a continuous feedback loop. So that's sort of the process to GHG mitigation. As I've noted, we really just focused on the first two stages, calculation and forecasting greenhouse gas emissions. So to put that into context, before I presented the GHG emissions profile, I wanted to go through the methodology that we use to actually estimate these GHG emissions. And for this project, we applied what's referred to as the Global Protocol for Communities, also what we refer to as the GPC protocol. For many years, there was really no consistent way to evaluate or measure community-level emissions. And because of that, it really made it really difficult to compare emissions between cities. So in 2014, the GPC protocol was created by the World Resources Institute, C40 Cities, and ICLI to really address that issue, and the purpose was to ultimately standardize the process to estimate in community GHG emissions. In terms of structure, the GPC protocol is purposely aligned with the IPCC reporting frameworks so that city, regional, provincial greenhouse gas emissions inventory can be rolled up to the national level and be reported out by Environment Canada in sort of a national inventory framework. So while we're not there at that level yet in BC or across Canada, the intent there, the VC government's really to get us there, at least on the provincial side. As you can see on the slide, the GPC has five key sectors: stationary energy, transportation, waste, industrial product and process use emissions, and agriculture, forestry and other land use. So you can sort of see how they align back to the IPCC reporting sectors. Now, these sectors are broken down further into subsectors, as you can see on this slide. So stationary energy breaks down into residential buildings, commercial manufacturing, energy, fugitive emissions and other sources. What's important to note is many of these sources are really hard to estimate, so the GPC protocol allows for sort of flexibility in that recording. So for example, you might have incineration and open burning from agricultural activities within the regional boundary, but oftentimes, there's no real way to estimate the actual emissions because we don't track burning. There might, we don't track, we don't offer licenses and we don't have controlled burns. So in these kind of cases, the GPC does provide that flexibility in recommending that, you know, we can note that this emission source is occurring, but you know, it has not been estimated. And that's sort of that, the opportunity for improvement in terms of gaps. The GPC also provides flexibility in how users set their boundaries. So one option is what we call the territorial framework. We only account for emissions that are, that only occur within a specific city boundary. The other approach is what we call the city-induced framework, where you actually recognize that GHG emissions are happening within the city, through the city and outside of the city because of the activities that occur. So the territorial framework is really not often applied because it doesn't provide a complete picture of the city's GHG emissions, and obviously tends to, excuse me, result in sort of the under-reporting of emissions. So as such, most cities prepare their inventories in accordance with the city-induced framework to which it actually has two reporting levels, what we refer to as basic and basic plus. So the basic level of the GPC is the most straightforward type of inventory prepared by most cities. If many, if you folks are familiar with the Community Energy and Emissions Inventories or the CEI inventories that the province used to prepare, this was sort of the approach that they followed. So the basic level reporting encompasses stationary energy, inbound transportation and sort of in and out of bound waste. Now, you also see that these sources are also organized by different scopes, scope one, scope two and scope three. Scope one emissions are those that occur within a physical boundary of a city. Scope two emission sources are those what we refer to as indirect emissions because these emissions occur outside of the boundary as a result of electricity consumption. So you, you know, you turn on a light switch in your house, you're consuming electricity, but that electricity is being generated through maybe the consumption of natural gas somewhere else, so recognizing those emissions. Scope three emissions are referred to, what we are referred to as other indirect emissions, and these emissions occur outside of the city as a result of city activities. So for instance, solid waste, you take your waste and oftentimes we export that waste outside of the city boundary into someone else's landfill. So but the scope three allows us to recognize, recognize the account for those emissions. And really, we use these different scopes to help us understand where we have influence on emissions and to avoid double counting. So if we act, if we say, you know, if an emission source is scope three, we know that we're not going to have as much control or influence over it because it's outside of our sort of legislative or boundaries or sphere of influence versus scope one, where it's, you know, we can make modifications to building permitting and that sort of thing. The next, the sort of step-up level is what we refer to as the GPC basic plus. So GBs, the basic plus level builds on the basic level but extends, expands to include industrial product and process use emissions, agriculture and forestry and other land use emissions and transboundary transportation. So it's a much more complex inventory, but more detailed. So with that context, in terms of this project, we aim to complete a basic plus 2007 and 2019 inventory at the regional scale with the intent to present GHG summaries for the Town of Gibson's, the District of Shell, the Shell Indian Government District, and a summary for electoral areas. We wanted to be able to split out the electoral area GHG emissions inventories, but unfortunately, there's not enough detailed data for us to do that at this point. So again, an opportunity for improvements in the future. And lastly, we used the 2019 inventory data to forecast emissions out to 2050. So as part of our approach to quantifying emissions, like I've talked about in the beginning, we sort of assess what data is available, look at the gaps and fill those with assumptions. So in terms of the sectors included in the SCRD inventory, most sectors are included except railways because there are none, incineration and open burning may be occurring, but there's no data collect to capture that information. We did have land use data, in terms of GIS data from the SCRD, but unfortunately, there was some issues with the spatial data, so we couldn't use SCRD data, but we were able to use Landsat data, which is not as granular or detailed. So because of that, we decided to report on land use emissions but not actually include them in the greenhouse gas emissions total. We also had challenges with vehicle registration data. So we have sort of the transportation information, but we don't, we didn't have up-to-date 2019 vehicle registration data, so we had to derive a methodology for that. So I'm not, I'm not bringing these kind of challenges up to make you question the greenhouse gas inventory, but what I want to do is recognize that when we do greenhouse gas emissions quantification, we're estimating this, the GHG emissions based on the best data we can get today. In a perfect world, we'd be measuring every single source, we'd have something on the end of every single tailpipe, and we wouldn't be using what we were sort of generic emission factors. But this is sort of what we have to work with, and this is, you know, this is sort of the standard process to developing GHG emission inventories. When we do these GHG inventories, like I've mentioned before, it gives, you know, we can identify these gaps and that sort of gives us an opportunity to make improvements over time. And I just, that's, all those different aspects are captured in that report. So over the next few minutes, I'm going to present the outcome of the 2019 emissions inventory. I'm going to talk about sort of key data gaps, challenges and some key recommendations going forward to improve these estimates over time. So at the regional district level, total greenhouse gas, 2019 greenhouse gas emissions were roughly around 350,000 tons excluding land use. If we include the land use GHG emissions, this value drops by about half as your parks, wetlands, forested areas capture and store more carbon than they release, which is an important thing. So when we compare your greenhouse gas emissions to the updated 2007 base year, the overall greenhouse gas emissions between the two years have increased about 7.2%. On a per person basis, the region's greenhouse gas emissions have declined about 3.3%. And this is really largely due to a change in electricity emission factors. If we look to compare it to other regional districts, the SCRD has a higher per capita greenhouse gas emissions profile. That's in part expected due to sort of the remoteness of the community as well as the industrial nature. You have a large energy-consuming pulp mill within your boundary, and that has a significant influence. So for instance, if we remove the pulp mill emissions, the overall per capita emissions drop to about 8.2. That's that more in line with what we expect. If we then went and layered back in the land use emissions, your overall emissions profile would drop to about 3.4 tons per person, and that, again, is more in line with what we've seen with other regional districts. So I know I've touched about the changes between 2007 and 2019 inventories, but it's also nice, it's nice to visually sort of see it. And as you can see, between the two inventories for 2007 and 2019, there's not a big change in the profiles. Your residential buildings are, you know, 12% in 2007, 10%. Your transportation emissions don't change that much, that much between the two years. So when I do greenhouse gas inventories, I also like to look at the fuel mix and the renewable portions of that mix because it can tell more of a story. So you can see that gasoline consumption has decreased a little bit in 2019, and that's likely due to improved sort of vehicle fuel efficiencies as compared to 2007. There's a slight change in jet fuels, but what we do see is a bump in natural gas consumption. Now, that bump in consumption is most related to the pulp mill, but it's also related to building. So in terms of electricity and natural gas, those two values are directly affected by weather. So if you have an extremely cold winter, you'll see natural gas and other fuel oils go up in consumption. If you have extremely hot summers, you'll see electricity and natural gas go up. So you have to, that's why it's nice to sort of look at the different fuel mixes, but with respect to that increase between 2007 and 2019, it's largely related to natural gas. So when we look at the emissions in terms of different SCRD members, it's pretty, there's not much of a change between the different members except for the electoral areas. And that's really related to, again, that bump in natural gas consumption and the pulp mill. So if we look at sort of the member summary, we see a similar sort of profile or breakdown between the different SCRD members. Buildings, building GHG emissions are sitting around the 20% contribution, on-road transportation, on-road and off-road transportation is around the 40%, so it's pretty similar, but then you've got a different profile for the electoral areas, and again, that's related to the pulp mill. What's interesting is if you take out the pulp mill emissions from the electoral areas profile, it looks quite similar to the profiles of the other SCRD members. So as part of this work, as I mentioned, we forecasted the business-as-usual emissions for the district. It was largely driven by changes to population, vehicle fuel efficiency requirements and what we could gather around sort of economic changes. So it's great that we're seeing more of a straight line rather than increasing line in GHG emissions, but what we, obviously what we want to see is the GHG emissions to go down, and that will come through the next stages of the project. So in terms of data gaps and challenges, like I said, in a perfect world, we'd measure every single source and have specific greenhouse gas emission factors, so, but that's not the case in any inventory. So as part of completing these inventories, we work to identify gaps and develop actions to fill those gaps to improve the inventories over time. In terms of sort of key data gaps and challenges, I just wanted to point out a few of them. So first off, the province of BC has not officially published the 2019 energy values that we received. So I would expect that the SCRD's GHG, total GHG emissions won't change, but there might be changes between members or the allocation of those emissions based on the updated data. Propane, fuel oil and wood emissions are estimated by the province using a 2010 energy balance model. They update the model based on heating degree days. So it's just an estimate of consumption, and what we found is sometimes with different local governments is, for instance, fuel oil consumption can be reasonably reflective in some communities and not at all. So here, we often recommend that you do it actually, that organizations do a fuel oil consumption survey to really understand, you know, how many buildings or how many residential buildings are consuming fuel oil because it's a high greenhouse gas emission source. When we, in terms of missing data, we could not get information sort of on construction equipment or equipment inventories at industrial work sites, so the gravel pit, the pulp mill, so there was, there were gaps there. As I had mentioned previously, we had, we did not have 2019 ICBC vehicle registration data. We know the province has it, but there's quite a process to get it involving legal teams and signing data agreements. So it's something that should be chased so we can improve that aspect. We could not get tugboat data or helicopter data. I don't expect these to be significant greenhouse gas emission sources, but you know, in terms of sort of refining and improving the inventory, that's an opportunity. And again, I've mentioned the issues around the spatial data. The data wasn't consistent, we had to rely on sort of third-party Landsat data, which is not as granular enough for our requirements. So for instance, we know there's agricultural activities within the SCRD, but that spatial data doesn't actually recognize areas of crop lands, so we knew that was a significant gap. In terms of key recommendations, you know, recognizing that the district has limited financial and people resources, at least from my perspective, the key areas that we could, that we would recommend that the SCRD work on in terms of improving data is getting access to that ICBC vehicle registry data. Work with the planning and GIS departments to, you know, really refine that land use data so that we can improve that estimate and really rely on, understand the changes in land use over time and how that's going to affect emissions. We recommend using, collecting and using LiDAR data. I know it's data-heavy, it's expensive, so maybe it's collecting that data every three to five years. As I mentioned previously, looking to complete an inventory of buildings using heating oil. That's a, that's a big source, and it's one that can be- That's a, that's a big source, uh, and it's one that can be eliminated through, um, just incentive programs and whatnot. So maybe, uh, and consider implementing a residential, a voluntary residential energy labeling program. Uh, a more simpler one is just work with the different harbor groups to track the types of boats entering the harbor, uh, so we can get that tugboat data and really refine the, the personal watercraft data. And then work with private companies to collect the total number of helicopter movements and, and heavy duty equipment fuel consumption volumes so that we can, again, refine that and then build those relationships to work with those organizations to start getting them to switch to, uh, low carbon or renewable fuels. So that's, that's it for my presentation. I think I hit the 15 minute mark. Uh, so I'll just, uh, pause there and open the floor to questions.
Great. Thank you, Daniel. Um, I'll get you to, uh, stop sharing your screen, please. And then we'll, we've got some hands raised here in the gallery. Perfect. Okay. Uh, first up, I have Director Ties and then Director McMahon.
Yes, hi, and, uh, thank you for that presentation. Um, I'm, my question is, uh, we are a very accessed and very bound community. Uh, are ferry emissions in any way incorporated in this?
Uh, which emissions, sorry?
Uh, ferries, uh, the B C ferries that we, uh, see spewing that nice big black smoke out every day when they come, come and go.
Yes, um, with other inventories, ferries was actually not cooperative, but, uh, for your inventory, we actually got, uh, uh, they're, they've provided us with their fuel, diesel fuel consumption volumes. Yes, it's included.
Uh, Director McMahon?
Yeah, my question is about logging. There's been a huge amount of logging on the coast since 2019. I passed three logging trucks on the way here. Uh, how do we, uh, track that kind of impact?
Good question. And that's where that land use data comes in. So the LiDAR, the GIS, or the photo information, um, if, I mean, you've got some LiDAR data that has to be cleaned up, uh, and checked for consistency and errors. But if you can start collecting that information over time, uh, you'll be able to sort of understand the impact that will have, uh, just in terms of land use as well as greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Director Beamish and then Director Hiltz.
I think somewhat related to what Director McMahon just asked, and that is, uh, the whole effort, we're talking here about emissions. Um, and I'm, I'm thinking about, um, uh, carbon sequestering and other things that happen. Like we're looking at, um, both SeaShelt and Town of Gibson's and their harbor areas have looked at protecting eel grass and replanting eel grass and building that up. Um, looking at, uh, reducing land clearing, uh, to any degree that we can in terms of, uh, tree cutting. Um, and then there's also recycling. I didn't see recycling accounted for in, in waste. Uh, we had landfill type waste, but not, uh, how is recycling looked at in terms of, uh, uh, reducing our green, greenhouse gas emissions and, uh, and managing that process?
Good question. So we did what we call a, I hate to keep throwing these different terms at everyone, but this was what we call a production-based inventory. Um, and it's really about, you know, GHG emissions being produced because of activities. There's another kind of inventory which is really hard to do. Uh, it's called a consumption-based inventory, uh, where we start looking at trade flows of goods and services well, as well as sort of end-of-life treatment. So we think about buying an iPhone, shipping it to the District of Shelt. The consumption-based inventory would capture those whole life cycle emissions from, you know, production, consumption and then disposal. Uh, so that's, that's, a consumption-based inventory will capture that recycling piece of that, but we can't really capture that directly in a production-based inventory. Um, the only way we really could is if you had a recycling center within, within the boundary, but all we're doing is capturing the electricity consumption and natural gas, natural gas consumption from operating, operating that facility. So typically what we do in terms of consumption-based inventories, um, I think there's about three cities in Canada that have done them. And we don't really recommend that people do those until they're really established in their production-based inventory. So really getting a good handle on that, understanding all your sources and then shifting to the, that aspect.
Okay. Uh, next up, uh, Director Hiltz.
Uh, thanks, thanks Chair. Um, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Lots, lots of data, lots of data gaps. And it was, the fuel mix is one that I was kind of drawn to, like, um, the, the assumption that I have as Director Ties is we live, we live, uh, water-based, we're surrounded by water. So everything that's brought here is mostly consumed here. So I, I would think that, you know, data like diesel sales, gasoline sales, B C hydro consumption, Fortis should all be readily available because this province derives sales tax from these consumptions. So I, I, I guess, where, where is that consumption data based that the province accumulates revenue from and allocated to our area? Like, seems to, should be fitting in here somewhere. Thanks.
I completely agree. Um, the province does collect some consumption data because of the, the carbon tax, but it's not complete. Uh, it's a big gap that they're aware of. Uh, and, uh, the climate action secretariat folks like, uh, Ken Porter and Ben Finkelstein are trying to figure that out. So we didn't, we don't have the, the full consumption data.
So, so as, as you're saying, so the province doesn't know how much fuel is consumed in B C?
They do know at, at the complete provincial level, um, to the extent that they can be a carbon tax, but they don't have it split out by sort of regional districts or cities.
And they don't do it through sales tax in any way?
No.
Interesting. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, because that was one of the things I was thinking about, like, uh, how, how the, uh, um, how the commercial industry and, um, you know, with their, how amenable they are to, uh, sharing their data from their sales as, like the actual retail, uh, sites? If, if any of them are, uh, even open to that within a region?
It's always, I mean, I don't want to sound negative. Um, it's always worth exploring, but unfortunately, my experience with the private sector about sharing data is they're not willing to, especially when it comes to fuel sales.
It's just, it's so, it's closely guarded as being, uh, proprietary to each, uh, business, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Director Seekers?
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at the report that actually was provided to us. The, this is attachment A in our package. And so if I look at page nine in the table of contents, um, when I was reading this, I noticed it for number four, Town of Gibson's, you had the 2019 profile and then energy and GHG emissions. For the District of SeaShelt, you did not have the profile. So I assumed that there was some information missing, but I didn't actually see that in the report. It looked like you had the same information for both municipalities. So is it just an error in the, the, um, table of contents? Or is there actually information that's missing from the District of SeaShelt?
I will, I don't have access to your package, so I'll just circle back with Raf on that one.
Mr. Shea, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Then I can see from the table of contents, after SeaShelt, the 2019 profile is just not moved to the next line.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, then I had a question on page eight of the pack, of the document, page 14 in the package. Uh, and it talks about waste. I noticed when I went through the tables, waste was included in all municipalities and the regional district. So I'm wondering how those, how you came up with those numbers? Because each, some have, you know, even S I G D has their own collection, but disposals all the regional districts. So I don't, I just wanted to get some idea about how the split of the numbers was calculated. Thanks.
There's solid waste or, or biological treat?
I believe it's solid waste. Uh, yeah, disposal and management of solid waste, the biological treatment of waste and wastewater treatment and discharge. So it's all of it, looks like.
Uh, solid waste, we got, uh, greenhouse gas emission numbers from the, uh, SCRD's consultants. Um, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, Raf? Do you remember?
Turn on my screen here as well. There we go. Thank you, Chair. Um, solid waste consultant is X C G and they provide a emissions inventory for the landfill. And then I believe the collection emissions would be captured in the transportation, um, substream.
Yeah. Wastewater emissions were based on, uh, actual, uh, wastewater treatment data in terms of volumes of effluent, um, that came from each of the different members, uh, collected by Raf and then passed to me. Um, with respect to composting, uh, that was also provided through Raf's contact. So where possible, we reached out to all different members and different, uh, data handlers to get that information first and foremost, before we tried to come up with estimates of our own.
Do you got more?
No, that's fine. Thanks.
Uh, next up I have Director Hiltz and then Director McMahon.
I'm just trying to remember the question. Um, I'll start with the, the ICBC data. Um, I, uh, local governments have been asking this for a couple of years and I think in 2020, they put the Tableau data where you can go online and, and get access to, uh, registration data in various areas. But that's not useful enough for the purposes. So what, what kind of data is, would be needed to make it useful? And I'm assuming that every other local government trying to do a community inventory is looking for the same kind of data.
So I've, I've done the capital regional districts greenhouse gas emissions inventory for all their members. Um, they did get the ICBC data and, uh, they have it actually broken down by postal code. We compared that to the Tableau data and we found there's significant differences, um, in, in the numbers. The other challenge with the Tableau data is we don't have commercial data. So it was, it's only sort of, uh, light duty vehicles sort of thing.
So the follow-up is what, what data would be, um, would you like to get from ICBC?
So the province has the data. Um, I know it's been a challenge for many years, uh, for many local governments. The data's there. Um, it's just an administrative hurdle to go through, uh, because you've got to get legal involved and get data sharing agreements going. But it's worth the effort, especially to understand, you know, what the vehicle profiles are in each of the different communities. How, you know, are electric vehicle sales or, uh, registrations increasing or decreasing? What's been interesting for us, just as, as a sideline, is what we've seen between, say, 2007 and 2019, is there's been a significant shift away from light duty vehicles to, uh, SUVs, which are high emission, high emission, uh, vehicles. We are seeing an increase in electrics, but we're seeing a significant shift that way, which is not really positive because people hold on to their cars for at least 10 years.
And that is, um, later in our agenda, we're talking about U B C M motions to go forward and that's one of the advocacy items that we, um, we flagged, that we probably be bringing up too is around the advocacy, um, because it's flagged in the staff report. So thank you staff for doing that as, uh, and Daniel as well, is that's something definitely we can bring forward as an advocacy item. Um, and next up I have Director McMahon and then Director Beamish.
I'm just going to observe that the state of our roads, it's no wonder that people are wanting to drive heavy duty four-wheel drive vehicles. But I, I was just, this is a minor point, but, uh, I assume you, uh, included uh, data from our landfill, but we also have a number of closed landfills. Were those, uh, included in the inventory?
Uh, no, they weren't.
Okay. Uh, Director Beamish?
Yeah, just a question as to your availability to present similarly to Gibson's because, I mean, I represent Gibson's, but they're not all here this morning. So I just wondered if that would be a possibility over the next, uh, month or so to have you make a similar presentation there?
Absolutely. I don't mind.
Okay. I'll let our C I O know. Thank you.
I will note that, um, we had sent out an invitation or we, um, we flagged that at Agenda Review that, uh, to invite the other governments and councils and if they could be here, um, to ask questions as well. But it, yeah, I think that's a great idea to actually have them. Um, next up, uh, back to you, Director Hiltz.
Thanks, Chair. Um, the, I'm interested in the comparisons, the, the profiles. You, you gave us four examples and, and everyone's collecting this data. So is it being collected centrally, like in open source? Can I go online somewhere and going, what is the difference of the profile between the SCRD and, uh, Thompson River Nicola? Can, can I do that anywhere on, in open source? So everyone is, is acting independently. It's been seen and there's no, no central way to collect the data for comparison purposes.
Yeah, that's still a challenge. Um, it's, it's helped me refine my Google skills, but, uh, yeah, we, we definitely need a database like that.
I'm not seeing any other questions for Mr. Heg. Um, Daniel, do you still want to stay online while we go through the staff reports? You're more than welcome to continue with us, um, just in case. But, um, I mean, we've got Mr. Shea who I know is very, uh, very informed on these issues. So, um, but you're welcome to continue to stay with us and thank you very much for the presentation today. Um, really appreciate your time and, um, and it sounds like there's just going to be some other governments reaching out to you as well on the coast. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Um, I will, I will leave, but, uh, you know, Raf's there and you can bombard him with all your emails and I'm certain he will, uh, him and I will connect after this and figure out next steps.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Heg, and have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, uh, so the first of our staff reports on Annex A, pages one to 114 of our agenda, just a small report, I'm sure. Um, and, uh, that, send it over to our manager of sustainable development, uh, Mr. Raf Shea. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Heg's done a great job covering the report's contents. So I'll just flag a few of the next steps that are identified in the staff report. The first is education and outreach activities that will happen to raise awareness about GHG emissions in the community. And I was just informed that the letstalk.scrd.ca/cclimate page is up and running now and has all these reports as well as summary infographics on them. The second outlines administrative and relationship building work that staff has to take to, um, get ready to improve the next inventory, as well as increase the willingness and, and, um, capacity of organizations in our community to, to think about, to track and to share emission data. Um, and that in part leads to the discussion about when is the ideal time for the next inventory? So in this report, there's a recommendation for that to happen in 2024. And then finally, staff are preparing engagement material to dive into the next questions that arise from having this report, which is what do we do now? So what should, what should we strive for in terms of an emission reduction target? And then how do we actually achieve that target? So that's the, the focus of staff at this point. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions, if there's any. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think my first question or my big question is, uh, when we talk about governments on the coast, uh, we have all of our municipal governments here, but we, I'm just wondering how the school district factors in, uh, with the number of school sites, uh, with the busing and, um, and how, because there's some real opportunity there with, uh, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the, um, environmental studies works that they're doing, not just with the, at the education level, but also what they're doing as a school district with their move to solar power and reducing their GHG emissions. And they, they almost in some way, and I'll say this because I, my previous tenure as a school board- tenure as a school board trustee, have a lot of experience with, with doing that work. And I'm just wondering if we can bring them in on the conversation as well, or if there'd been any, especially as we're talking about intergovernmental collaboration.
Thank you, Chair. There's a variety of committees, and our staff committees and working groups that are addressing different subsets of those questions, on the transportation side, on the building side. So those conversations are happening on a staff level, and will continue as the action planning phase of this project evolves and gets into the more details. Yeah, there's certainly a large community partner and player in our community.
Certainly. And wherever there's some cross advocacy places that we can, that we can intersect at the, at the elected level, if staff see any synergies there, I think it's important to flag for, for the elected going forward, too. So there's definitely, because sometimes they may have a different, a different way of approaching something than we do. And having that, that integrated collaborative voice going forward from all of the different governments, it adds more, it adds more weight to some of the things that we're asking for. So I'll look to directors, Director Hiltz.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, one question on the report that mentions a forecasting calculator. Is this an app? Like, you can get it on your phone? Like, could you just tell me what the forecasting calculator is and the usefulness of it for the communities? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, it's not quite yet an app that is user-friendly. It's an extensive spreadsheet that includes all the calculations for the reports that you have here, and then an ability to integrate different policy mechanisms with estimated emission reduction scenarios tied to them. And that's how the Figure Three is generated. So those can be tweaked as the federal, provincial, and local government policies get announced.
So it's an unfriendly way of app, so to speak. Follow-up, Director Hiltz?
So this is a spreadsheet in-house development? It's not using an external model that you bring into its, it's developed by the SCRD in conjunction with StanTech, or?
That's correct. StanTech developed the spreadsheet, and we are collaborating with our local government partners to make sure that it helps them meet their needs as well.
So to follow up on that, it's, it's, it's a little disappointing that the feds and the province haven't done more work in that way, when, when this is something that is so pressure-driven onto local governments, that we should be, you know, monitoring and looking and everything, yet there, there's no tools developed, like, we have to develop, everybody has, is having to develop their own tools. Is that, that's really what we're hearing, right?
Thanks for the opportunity to comment. The, there's a variety of, of tools for the community, or of, of private sector service offerings for helping navigate these questions from the private sector on a community scale, as well as from a corporate on a smaller scale, as well as smaller boundary. One thing that was recently announced is the Local Government Climate Action Program. So that's one mechanism that capacity is being increased in local governments from the province.
Director McMahon?
Yeah, I just, and I should have probably asked our previous guest this question, but were there any surprises? When you got the results for this inventory, was it pretty much what everyone was expecting, or were there any revelations?
I think, thank you. There's one, you know, when, when looking at this quantity of data, one area that's helpful to evaluate is the variance, how, how things have shifted from 2007 to 2019. And, and one area that has shifted dramatically is a 70% increase in natural gas use for residential heating. That's one, one material trend that we can see in the community. Another, another material trend that we are seeing is the increase in electric vehicles on the Sunshine Coast. But again, as our presenter was, was explaining, the, the vehicle data is, is, is not precise enough at this point to help us really understand what's happening with the rest of the vehicle fleet. We just have a good idea that, that there's more electric vehicles on the Sunshine Coast, and that's a move in the right direction.
A follow-up, Director McMahon?
Actually, I have a different question.
I'll allow.
I'm not too clear what the SCRD's role in housing retrofits is, is going to be going forward, but I would think it would be useful to get the BC Assessment Housing Inventory data, so that we have some idea of the age and condition of our residential housing stock. So I'm just asking if that's something that we can pursue. Thank you.
Manager Shea?
Thank you. Yeah, the SCRD does not have a, our building department inspects new construction, so that's a question that we'll have to explore further, because it is a large segment of our emissions. And information and data from the BC Assessment Housing Inventory, or all other sources to help us move forward, will be, will be pursued.
Director Hiltz, again.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm looking at the 45% material gap. And I don't really know what to make of that 45%. So as an individual on the Sunshine Coast, would that mean I need to reduce my emissions by 45%? Like, I'm trying to go from the very broad to the individual kind of aspect. And so I would need to reduce my emissions by 45% by 2030 to kind of sort of do my part as the community? Is that how I would interpret the 45% reduction? Just trying to, like, how do I think of it as an individual opposed to a community? And what my role would be in, in reducing emissions? And does that 45% like apply to me? I guess I'm trying to understand. Thanks.
Manager Shea?
That's a good question. Thank you for the, the chance to comment. On the, the 45% reduction in emissions comes from our collective best understanding of the science available to limit an overshoot, a massive overshoot of 1.5 degrees Celsius, after which runaway climate change may, may limit our ability to, to do anything about it. So the 45% reduction includes individual actions, but we are all part of a system. And the system also creates a lot of emissions. So some areas have, some areas and some individuals have more impact than others. And along that line of thought, there's the, one of the principles is differentiated responsibility, where our society has benefited from historical emissions, and as such, has a greater moral burden and, and legal burden in the Paris Agreement to reduce emissions more quickly. So, so the 45% reduction, functionally, is perhaps a, a minimum threshold for what we, we should do in a, in a developed country, assuming that developing nations will require more capacity building and time to, to fully transition to a low-carbon future.
Director McMahon?
Right. Obviously, one of our big challenges here is transportation. And so transit, which we do control, is, is a part of this picture. I remembered hearing at some previous meeting that BC Transit had committed to transition their fleet to electric by 2030, but I just heard on the news on the radio today that they're saying 2040. Is that the case? Do we have a, a date for the hopeful transition of our bus fleet here on the coast?
Manager Shea, do you have an answer for that?
I don't want to speak on behalf of my, my colleagues, but I, I believe we are waiting for the, the implementation ranking from BC Transit as to what communities will be electrified first. And that, that includes a variety of considerations, and such as the, the recharging network and infrastructure, as well as the topography and, and things of that nature.
All right. I'm seeing that's the end of our speakers list. We do have a recommendation from staff on page one of the report, for, that a budget, that a proposal for an updated GHG emissions inventory be presented at 2024 budget. And I'll look to see if the directors, I have Director Ties moving that, and Director McMahon is seconding that. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, thank you, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. That's, it's quite the, quite the extensive report there. It's really good. I've had a request for a five-minute break. Did we want to do that now, or get through the next item first and then have our break? Look to the directors. Yeah. No, no, we want to keep Raff around for as long as we can. Okay, we'll go, we'll do the next item, and then we'll, we'll go through Annex B, number four, which is the Sunshine Coast Climate Risk Assessment. Once again, over to Manager Shea, please.
Thank you, Chair. It's staff's pleasure to bring forward this report to move one step forward on the strategic plan priority of a climate change adaptation strategy. It's important to note staff's appreciation for the work done by our partners at ICL Canada, the Interdepartmental Staff Project Team, as well as representatives from all our community project team members. This report marks the culmination of Milestone Two in the Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities Framework. The Sunshine Coast is facing several climate risks, and these will continue to strain our adaptive capacity. The conclusions of the Climate Change Science Report and the risk assessment in many ways reflect the expectations that climate extremes will continue to increase in severity and frequency from what we witnessed in 2021. Where the reports differ from our recent experience is when we start to address slow onset changes, such as sea level rise and impacts on biodiversity. Like the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory, these reports will be shared on letstalk.scrd.ca/cclimate, and staff will be conducting outreach activities to raise awareness, as well as validate conclusions. This is also where the empowering discussion finally starts. Milestone Three, our, our next task on this one, is action planning. And staff are looking forward to working with the community on mapping out proactive steps that we can take to increase our resilience and our adaptive capacity. Another step involves greater engagement with Shishal Nation and Squamish Nation. The project team has a good working relationship with staff from the nations, but more needs to be done with the community at large to ensure that the Climate Emergency Action Plan that's finally developed out of this process supports First Nation values and visions for this place. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I will start off with Director Bemish, please.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for the work they're doing on these projects, this project and the previous one, and, and also the integration with other local governments. But I think one thing we need to do is make sure that we are, that we're all sharing this information, both internally and externally. A lot of people, for example, in our community might not go to the SCRD website to look for information about risk assessment. But, so it should be on our website as well, the same information and the linkage there, because I think it's really important. And I mean, this, these are examples of areas that we need to collaborate in and work together on, on an ongoing basis, because they don't recognize, there's no jurisdictional boundary on climate or emissions. It is, it's a common issue, and we have to share that commonly. And if it, if it requires the town of Gibson's to also share costs, then I certainly would be prepared to recommend that to our council. This needs to be a common approach among all of our councils and jurisdictions working on these issues. It is at the staff level. I can see the staff are talking about it. This needs to be on our agenda as much as it is on, on the SCRD agenda for that conversation to occur, and it needs to be on our website. And so that it not go to SCRD website to look for it, because local people may not do, do that in Gibson's. We need to share this. So thank you for what you're doing here, and I congratulate you on your, your reports. Thank you.
Okay. Over to Director Seakers.
Thank you. First, I noticed that voting on here is all, so that I believe that we're all, like, even the municipalities are paying into this service at the regional district. So, you know, we don't need to duplicate the work. This is the work for all of us. And, you know, I agree that we could have links potentially on our websites pointing here. We don't need to duplicate the information. The information can be on the regional district website. We can point to it, but that would be beneficial. One of the things that, that I asked, and this is during the Agenda Review, was, we have this climate risk assessment now. There has been work coming, leading to this report. How much has our emergency management, emergency management personnel been involved with this? Because one of the things that we're hearing in the community is they want to know for these risks, what kinds of programs do we have in place? Have we anticipated what the, the implications are, and how are we going to deal with that? And again, that's an SCRD service function, that it should be provided all up and down the coast. So that's the information they're looking for. So I'm wondering how much are they, how much of this has been incorporated, and how much more are they taking and putting, moving forward, so that we have the risk assessment information that we can get out to the community in a very easy way?
Thank you, Chair. The Protective Services Division is part of the internal project team that's working on this project, and we're collaborating on this and other things as well. As we dive into action planning on Milestone Three, there's going to be a lot more ongoing discussion around roles and responsibilities, and how to, to make capacity responsive to the, the challenges at hand. One notable area to, to note is the, the two main climate risks identified here. One of them is wildfire-related, and that includes a human health component with, with air quality and things. But as, as far as the wildfires themselves happen, our Protective Services have increased capacity quite a bit recently, and, and mostly around implementing the wildfire, the community wildfire protection plan. And every summer, we now send crews up to the interior to, to help gain, to help those communities with wildfires, but also gain experience. And we're updating our equipment on that front. So perhaps there's more that needs to be done to communicate that with the community as well. And then another thing I just would like to, to note is, a big intent of this plan is that we reduce the need for emergency response services. It's like the old saying goes, an ounce of prevention is a, a pound of cure. So it varies wildly, but we generally believe that emergency response and recovery ends up being four times more expensive than, than resilience and adaptation work. That's more proactive in nature.
Yep. Go ahead.
It is very important to get the information out as to what the regional district is doing. And I'll give you an example. A local resident was very close to the fire that was up by the power lines last year, has completely fire smarted his, his property and others, has installed sprinklers, and is totally freaking out because he doesn't know what the plans are. That's one example. And I mean, I bet every director here could give you examples of people in their communities who have contacted them to say, what is happening? What is the plan? So it, it might be happening. We need to ensure that that information's getting out to the community. Thank you.
If you'd like to comment, Manager Shea?
Thank you. On that one specific topic, we are looking for, our staff are looking for private residences to sign up for free fire smarting assessments on their properties. So that's a service that's now offering, that's the, SCRD's now offering, and we can share the link to that if it hasn't been already shared. But there's, there's a service and the ability to help people walk through how to, how to do that on their properties.
Is it also on our climate, will it be on our climate change, let's, let's talk climate change piece as well? Because- Because having the the cross linkage there would probably be helpful, too. Oh, I'll go to Director Seakers and then over to you, Manager Shea.
On a call I was on yesterday with ministries around wildfire, they talked about the fire smarting program and how there is money available for residents to actually do the work on their property. And they said, I think they said it's $500 that's available. Under the previous program, the new program that that the new program is now $1,000 per resident. So we've asked whether or not that's retroactive. So I don't know if that's part of our program, but if that is, that might be part of what needs to be communicated as well. If if residents know that there's money to actually help them do the work, we might have more uptake as well. Thanks.
Manager Shea?
The with with regards to the connecting the information on on Let's Talk, the the climate work in general is a very cross-disciplinary realm. It touches Vancouver Coastal Health is is implementing its health adapt plan right now, so we're working a lot with them on on the human health sides. There's there's a lot of natural, natural ecosystem considerations as well. And then there's a lot of areas where S C R D has direct jurisdiction, such as water, such as fire protection. And where those are possible, we will be linking to the creating some more cross dependencies because some of those areas have engagement activities right now, for example, with the water strategy.
Great, thank you. Director McMahon, and then Director Lee.
One of my all-time favorite S C R D reports is the geotechnical report for Elphinstone, which has lovely maps full of bright red splotches. My house is right in the middle, the bright red splotch, which is not good news. So I'm assuming that some of this data will be going forward to to use in our O C P revisions with with regard to things like establishing different kinds of development permit areas. But also, are we going to have some pretty risk maps that we can show up on our website?
Pretty or or ugly, we, you know, there's no judgment there, I guess. Manager Shea?
Making this information accessible and and understandable is is a key challenge in mobilizing the community to to do the, to to step up to the challenge at hand. We're we're talking about a pretty massive shift of how we are organized as a society to reduce our emissions and to adapt to a new climate normal. And if if maps with pretty colors help with that, that's certainly something that I'll I'll ask for some help on developing.
Director Lee?
Yes, I got two questions, actually, but I'll start with the community-level response plan when evacuations are necessary, for instance, or ensuring that there's supplies made locally. Will that be included in the next phase of your work? I noticed that disaster management and business continuity was one of the items in in the earlier presentation, so.
Thank you. Yeah, the the climate adaptation action planning will collaborate closely with our protective services. We also have an emergency services volunteer group that that we meet with regularly, and they're doing a lot to increase capacity in the community. So there's always opportunities for for individuals to to participate more directly in that, those specific avenues as well, if that's of interest.
Do you anticipate projects in 2023 to accomplish those kind of things, at least for a few of the communities, or?
Thank you. That that's something that we can take back, and I can check in with my protective services colleagues to better understand their work plan for the next year and how we may be able to to collaborate forward.
Yeah, I don't know for sure who puts the plans in together, so it seems like there's two departments that need to work together. Because it definitely, we're forecasting it to happen, it's high, so. And my second question was, you mentioned, it mentions ocean rise, but ocean rise is not a a local phenomenon, it's caused worldwide. Is is the ocean rise actually 10 years ahead of what the forecast, or is it still running on forecast?
Thank you for the question. One area where a lot of local governments are waiting for more data on a on a more downscaled granular basis is sea level rise. The the most recent Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Sixth Assessment Report has updated the collective understanding of the science, and we're looking to seeing where that will lead for for us locally with with our specific coastlines. So there's a lot of agencies working on downscaling that data so that it's more usable for us. So it's something that we're monitoring closely, and every, it seems like every week there's new science around more water on this iceberg or this ice shelf, or less water there. So I think it's 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 something that we have to just monitor and continually update as the science changes. And then and then from that, we can derive our maps and and show people visually where where those impacts are more likely, and then start to to adapt to those in terms of critical infrastructure and and what we need to do.
Yes, I think all of our plans for our ports and our docks are directly related to that. The federal government's got, I think, a three-foot increase right now in their new build. I guess we're probably okay with our local ports. So that's why I was wondering if there's something we needed to panic about, or was just something we're going to watch for the next couple of years? That was my question.
Do we panic, Manager Shea? I think if we haven't started panicking already, then we must be dead inside.
There's, yeah, the this milestone two does bring up a long list of of issues. I think in the report, it said we started off with 200, over 250. So to boil it down to this list, if sea level rise made it to this final list from the original start, it's because it's it's an area of concern that that needs to be monitored closely and and adapted to. So we we do need to do something about it. With regards to specifics, around three feet or more or less, there there's more, more needs to be done to better understand that and update our 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 methodologies. So we'll leave that to the, you know, the the professional associations of engineers of B C there. They've got the the standards that they're reviewing as well with with the new sciences that becomes available. And then the other aspect of that is the the storm surge. It's it's not just the sea level rise, but it's also the intensity of the of the storms that we are witnessing. So that compounds it as well.
Do you have a follow-up? Okay, okay. Thank you, Director Lee. Yeah, the and the the climate events that are happening that are taking us off guard, like just last year with heat domes and and atmospheric rivers. I mean, these terms that we haven't even heard before. It's 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 new ballgame. So thank you very much, Manager Shea. I don't see any other questions? Nope, okay. So with that, we're going to take a a few minutes break. Thank you again, Manager Shea, and also to Mr. Hag earlier. And let's see, so come back at, should we do, let's say, a nine-minute break, come back at 10:55? Nine minutes, okay? Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you and welcome back to our Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, May, or Wednesday, no, Thursday, May 26, 2022. And we are going to continue on with Annex C, number five on our agenda package, which is the 2022 Budgets Project Status Report Update. So we have a spreadsheet with this. So I'm, I'm going to be going off of the paper copy that I have in front of me, but I'm just going to look over to staff to see if they'd like to introduce anything, or if we can just jump right in with questions. Jump right in. Okay, we're just going to jump because that's what we like to do. So we're going to start on page one of the spreadsheet, which is page 147 of your agenda package. And going to, I'm going to start off with a question in regards to the COVID restart funding. I know there was a deadline for allocation where we were going to be spending those funds. Do we have a deadline on when they have to be spent? And so just a general question, because I know we've, we've got, who would like to take that?
I can actually speak to that because I worked with Tina on this piece. We had to, by the last submission, we had to identify where the funding was going to be spent, like which categories, et cetera. But we, there's no timeline to spend it.
Okay. So, yeah, so, but we've passed, have we passed the deadline?
We've passed that and we've identified that.
That allocation deadline. Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. And I'll go to, so for page one here, or page 147, if you're in our electronic package, I see Director Seegers and then Director Lee.
Thank you. Lines two and three, please talk about hybrid meeting solutions and boardroom modifications and also software to assist with that. And I noticed that they're not started. Have these been, has somebody been identified to actually lead these? Where are we at? And I know service, or the supply chain issues are an issue as well. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. So we have actually started very, very preliminary work and we're collecting information right now and preparing, in preparation for a request for proposal. The work has been delayed due to competing work priorities, but I think we're, we're ready and we're, we're slowly moving that forward.
Yep, go ahead.
I know, I know that there's been conversation about technology that's going to be provided to the new directors coming in. And given that we're doing hybrid meetings, I think we all know that we have to somehow incorporate some kind of technology at the board table so that, I mean, right now, if you look around here, most of us, not everybody, but you know, we have two devices here. So how are we going to facilitate that as well? And that's just something that has to be incorporated. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Yes, absolutely. That will be part of the contemplation of how we outfit the boardroom going forward. And we anticipate, we'll likely come up with different scenarios and what types of meetings we're going to be hosting in the boardroom. Further, it also should integrate with the item number three, which is the meeting management software. So all of that has to be contemplated together and put forward. And we expect that hopefully somebody will bid on it and come back to us with some options. And then we can go forward from there. But we plan to move it forward this year. We are starting work on it prior to the election.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Lee and then Director McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Director Seegers asked one of my questions because I was wondering if this was still a valid project, actually. And I can see from your answer that yes, it's, we're coming at it a little different than what I was thinking because we seem to be doing pretty good right now with the hybrid, but there's other, other places. So I am happy with that. My question is about the website redesign. The proposed completion date's January 22. And I thought we were going to have it in service about that time. So now I'm wondering when it'll be in service. And I was wondering if maybe we need a project refresher because we've also got the electronic document and records management system that I'm assuming directors are going to be able to use that one as well to find stuff. And, and I was looking at this as some way of us finding information remotely that we need to do research. And so I'm hoping it was sooner rather than later we'll have this thing. So just wondering if there's a new timeline, what it looks like? Is there any, any prospects of giving us a refresher on what's happening and when it's going to happen? Thanks.
Thank you for the question. I believe our communications manager is in the gallery and he is prepared to speak to that timeline for the website if it can be brought in.
Thanks, sure. Thanks for your question, Director Lee. Yeah, so we're, we're six weeks into our, into our website redesign, into the project itself. And we are hoping that we should have project completion by the end of this year. And that's with us really pushing this along as quickly as we can. And right now, we're in the, the period where we're going through our site map. Yesterday, we took three hours and kind of tore apart our current website and figured a way to make it a new one, more service specific. And, you know, more kind of, you know, user driven, more accessible. And, and with regards kind of documents, sorry, I was being promoted to a panelist and I kind of just missed a tiny bit of what you're saying. But just so you're aware, we, we are hoping to have a document repository which can be searchable. And so if you are looking for, you know, an agenda from, you know, 2014, you can go in, you can find it in a much more user friendly manner than we currently have. The, the content management system that we're going to be using is WordPress as well. So it means that, you know, what we start with is not necessarily, you know, we can essentially have add-ins to this. It's, it's a lot more versatile than what we have right now. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. That was the answer I was hoping for.
And I saw some smiles and thumbs up around the, around the table as well, Manager Buckley. So that's fantastic. We're looking forward to that. So I have Director McMahon and then Director Seegers again.
That's, that's really exciting because even things like policies and bylaws, trying to find them right now. I shouldn't have to be bothering staff every time I need a copy of a bylaw or policy. I was going to say, just ask, our YouTube thing, is that going to be part of this hybrid meeting solution? I mean, much as I enjoy the commercials, i-if we find a commercial free format, that would be cool. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. So I, I believe there will be an option for us going forward when we choose our meeting management solution, whether or not we want to continue to livestream to YouTube or to a platform hosted by the meeting management software provider.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Director Seegers.
Thank you. Last item on the page, number nine. This talks about field road space planning. And I know we did a bit of a pivot because of COVID and potentially not having everybody back into the office and, and do some remote working, et cetera. But are we still moving the project forward or looking at how we deal with the space that is needed here? Because that is an issue, meeting space for staff and actually bringing all the staff in to work in the office. Is that something that's still having some, some work on it? Because it says 75% in progress. Thanks.
Okay, CFO Perot, do you want to take that one?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair. So we are transitioning to what we are naming the alternative work strategy. And so this means we are having shared meeting spaces. We have multiple touchdown workstations, and they're not 100% utilized at this point. We're also implementing our technology slowly as we're short-staffed in our information systems division. So we are continuing to move forward with those. So if, if you did walk the halls, you'll see that there are a few areas that are in a little bit of disarray at this particular point. And once we have the final moves completed, we are envisioning that there's going to be more touchdown and our breakout areas to alleviate meeting space or to open up meeting space as an example. So one example of that will be that we typically use our Cedar Room as a training lab, and that will now transition to what we have as our touchdown meeting room. We have 10 workstations. So that will alleviate and add another meeting location. We're also looking at our utilization of meeting booking rooms, and they're still underutilized right now. For instance, we have our Dogwood Room, which is the outside annex, which is not used very much at all. So as people transition more to work, we're seeing more, but we, we are still having enough space at this particular time. So.
Go ahead.
I think what we were told though, that if all of the staff were to come back, we wouldn't have place to put them. So although we're saying it's an alternative work strategy, they have to book a space, we are basically saying, no, you cannot all be here at the same time because we don't have room for you. So are we looking at addressing that? Or will, will these alternative touchdown spaces ensure that if everybody actually wanted to come back to this building to work here, we could actually put them somewhere?
Go ahead, CFO.
So at this particular time, I believe that is the case. We are having still a lot of people who want to do the hybrid work environment, but we still have people that are 100% here on space. So at this point, we have enough locations for people. It's more of a scheduling type of thing. And we have also identified that there are still several opportunities within the facility that if we did expand or have people who no longer could accommodate the flexible working, so they wanted to be here 100% of the time, that we do have some alternatives. So we continue, I don't know if you noticed this morning, but we're doing a little renovation as part of the approved budget to do alterations to reception. And part of that is to add another office right behind it. So to close that off. So again, you'll, we're continuing to do these types of things. So at this point, we're, we're pivoting in the way we work. So I, at this point, it sounds like we're okay. If, if we had a mandate for 100% of the people to come back, I think we would see more of those flexy touchdown and shared workspaces.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for page one of the spreadsheet package, also known as page 147 of your electronic package? All right, we will move on to page two of the spreadsheets or page 148 of the electronic pass package. And I had a question around the PIA, the Privacy Impact Assessments. And just wanting a bit of clarity on exactly what that entails. And I imagine, like I'm, I'm seeing it with the, with the closed circuit TV proposals, like around, especially around transit and that kind of thing. But I'm just, I'm wondering how big is that scope of the, like, what do we exactly have to do with privacy impact assessment? And is it regulated and mandated by provincial or federal? Sorry. It, there's, it's on a multiple amount of items, but it is on line 12 is where it's first initiated.
Thank you for the question. I can speak to them in a general sense that we are legislatively required to conduct privacy impact assessments typically when they're done internally. So when there's any new project or initiative that's coming forward, it's done with the intention to identify any personal information that we may be collecting and to ensure that we're adequately protecting and keeping that information secure and that we contemplate how we're disclosing it if we're disclosing it. So that is a requirement under the act. And there's a renewed emphasis on privacy management with the recent amendments in the FOI legislation. So further to that, they will be requiring privacy impact assessments for all digital and electronic programs that we will be implementing. And there are many. So it's almost becoming a routine part of all of our, our project development is to conduct privacy impact assessments where we are collecting or working with personal information.
Great. Thank you, Corporate Officer. I appreciate that. Any other questions on page two of the spreadsheets or also known as page 148 of your electronic package? Seeing none, we will move on to page 149 of the electronic package or page three of 20 of the spread, printed spreadsheets, line items numbers 18 through 24. Any questions there? Director Seegers.
Thank you. Line 19. This is the hoist replacement indicates regulatory compliance, but not started. So I'm wondering if we're looking to move this forward fairly quickly? I mean, I would guess this is a safety kind of concern as well. It's a hoist in one of our garages. Thanks.
I see Manager Gagnon. This is your department. Over to you.
Yes, thank you for the question. We are in conversations right now, actually, with BC Transit to see if there's any funding share that might be accommodated. And once we get an answer on that, then we're moving ahead right away, either way. So if there is no funding available through BC Transit, we'll move quickly on it independently. But I just am taking one last chance at the possibility. So thank you.
We like sharing budgets. That way, getting money from other sources is always nice. Anything else on that page? So that's line items 18 through 24, page three of the printed package or page 149 of your electronic. Okay, so we will move on to page four, line items 25 through 31, or page 150 of the electronic package. Any questions there, directors? Going once, going twice, we will flip the page to page 151 of the electronic package, page five of your printed, line items 32 to 35. Do I hear anything for lines 32 to 35? Okay. Next up, page six of the printed package, line items 36 through 42, or page 152 of your electronic package. I wish we had a cricket sound. Next up, we'll go, change to the next page, page seven of the printed package, page 153 of your electronic, line items number 43 to 49. I'm going to slowly turn the page. Oh, man, Director Lee. Okay, what you got? What line?
Line 47. It's the Sun Coaster Trail. I must say, I was very happy to see it on there and seeing it going ahead. Are we confident that our community partners are ready to tackle this and finish that phase of the Sun Coaster Trail?
GM Gagnon, I know that we also have Manager Clarkson in our gallery if we wanted to move him in.
I'm happy to answer this question. Thank you, Chair. I just would like to provide some clarity around this particular item. This is only for a small section of a trail in Phase Two that actually already exists because we have land tenure in this area. And so it is not sort of the completion of Phase Two by any means. It's a small section, which I believe is in the Big Tree Park area. So we have had discussions with community partners and it sounds like everybody's willing to get involved. This budget is to help finance some of the materials and supplies that will be needed for the, the trail. We do not have any of our permits or any of that yet, but that the work is ongoing towards this. So I hope that provides the clarity for you, Director Lee.
Follow-up?
Yes, I think I heard it's a small, small chunk of the total trail that we need to finish. I think between Sea Shelton and the ferry is what we're talking about here for the Sun Coaster. So we don't have plans in place to do the whole end-to-end thing yet. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we're going to turn the page, go line items number 50 through 57, which is page eight of the printed package, or page 154 of the electronic package. Directors, any questions there? Oh, Director McMahon. I missed your electronic hand.
Line item 57, the Administrative Assistant for Community Services, how's that going?
Well, you should never ask me HR questions, because every time I answer them, I'm usually jinx myself. But I am very pleased to say that we have made an offer that has been accepted, and I anticipate someone starting in that position at the beginning of July, and I cannot say how happy that makes me.
Manager Parker, did you want to add anything to that? Nope, okay. I'll ask on line 51, regarding the parking, if there's, I see the May 9th update is, for Cooper's Green, is it still, it's still in progress? Do we have any further update other than just in progress for parking for Cooper's Green? Line 51. Shelley, you are muted.
Thank you.
That was scintillating, though, what you said, I'm sure.
Thank you for the question. So again, just to provide some context, this is in relation to not the parking requirement around the hall itself, but rather the parking for the site and the site circulation and the competing needs and interests, et cetera. So we have engaged a civil engineer to do some conceptual planning for us, but that has, it's the same civil engineer that was doing our design for Cooper's Hall, so the priority, of course, was in the civil requirements for the hall itself. So this is progressing as originally planned, and I'm hopeful that I would have enough information to be able to bring something forward as part of the 2023 budget deliberations. But I say that hopefully, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any further questions on that page? Okay, we will move on to page nine of the printed spreadsheet, or page 155 of your electronic board package, or committee package, line numbers 58 through number 70. Are there any questions on any of these items from Directors? Director Lee?
I had too much time to make notes. On line 65, we're hiring a senior project manager to move the, I'll just call it the dump replacement along. Is the, is our difficulty in getting this guy in place, is it slowing us down at all, or are we still on schedule?
GM Rosenbaum, over to you, please.
Thank you very much. Part of the scope of work of this disposition would indeed be the development of a new long-term waste disposal site. The work is not significantly slowing down, because I'm trying to keep it rolling. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further questions on, for line items 58 through number 70? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody jumping up and down, so we will move on to lines 71 through 86, which is page 10 of the printed package, or page 156 of the electronic package. And Director McMahon, you're first up.
Sorry, we're on page 10, I thought we were on page 11.
Page 10, or 156.
All right, ignore me.
Okay, ignored. But I will make a note that I will be hearing from you on page 11. Anyone else on line items 71 through 86, page 10 of the package, page 156 of the electronic package? All right, I'm not seeing anyone, so Director McMahon, you're first up for line items 87 to 105, on page 11 of the printed package, or page 157 of the electronic package.
Yes, I'm interested in item 91, which is Edwards Lake Siphon, just wondering if anything at all has happened, or it's too early to tell because it's still frozen up there. Thanks.
GM Rosenbaum, over to you.
Thank you very much. We're indeed planning to go up there once the snow is gone, to do the remaining assessments, including archaeological and environmental, in support of our permit applications. Thank you.
Great, Director Seegers.
Thank you. I noticed in a number of these projects that you're awaiting permits. So is the ministry behind in providing the support that we need to move some of these projects forward? I think it was the dams that I, that we were waiting for things.
Thank you very much. Recently, we had some progress from BC Parks, which was long anticipated, so we're moving ahead there. Thank you for your concern.
Yes, we're always happy to camp out on a ministry doorstep if needed. Deploy your board. Any other questions on page 11, or items 87 to 105? Seeing none, we will move on to the next page, so line items 106 through 120, page 12 of the printed, or page 158 of the electronic package. Director Seegers.
Sorry, I'm back on the previous page, just briefly, just a comment. This is regarding with the request for the amended EFM, the environmental flow needs. I noticed it's been submitted to Flynn Ward, so that's amazing news. Thank you.
Yay, happy dance. Okay, so page 158, items 106 to 120, Director Hiltz.
I do, I'm waiting for a save here, but I can't remember what I was asking. It was, I believe, line 108, oh, I got it back. No, I don't. And it was, I'm going by memory here, it was the Selma Park valve stems, it's imminent asset failure. I'm wondering about the risk of that failure leading into the drought period of time? And I see it's held up because of staff vacancies.
GM Rosenbaum?
Thank you very much for the question. I would have to check back with staff on this one, because there were recently some major valves replaced on Selma in the last several weeks. I'm not sure if it was these valves or other valves, but recently some valves were replaced. And the need, the risk is that increase of an emergency, the risk of these valves is that in the case of emergency, we might not be able to close off our Selma One reservoir, our major reservoir. So if there would be a major water outbreak close to the treatment plant, the reservoir would just drain, which is not really desirable. So, but I think actually that this project has been completed last several weeks, so I will follow up on that. And if so, I will correct it in the next BPSR. Thank you.
Okay, Director Lee?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Line 113, Cove K Pump Station rebuild. I noticed we're delaying it again. I was just wondering, is there any risk of failure that is compounded by delaying, or is this just kind of okay?
Thank you for the question. I would consider it a mix of the two answers. It's kind of okay, but it's, we have a backup plan in place. We have a mobile treatment facility that we could use if necessary up there, because it's a relatively small water system. So it's kind of okay, but I'm not happy with it. And it's the vacancies, the same vacancies on our engineering staff that are causing the delays in the development review that are also causing delay here. And over the summer, I will have further discussions in terms of our ability to actually contract out some of this work instead of aiming to do it in-house in terms of the development and project management. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything else on page 12? Seeing none, I will move to line items number 121 through 134, page 159 of the electronic package, or page 13 of your printed package. Directors, any questions there? Director McMahon?
I always like to ask if there's anything new about Wood Creek Park, since we finally got our grant. Thank you.
GM Rosenbaum?
Staff are preparing a report to be presented to the board for formal acceptance of the grant. And we are currently, because the grant application was submitted two years ago, about a year and a half, two years ago, so we're also updating our cost estimate and present it to the board. Because, as you can expect, or we expected the cost might have risen a little bit over the last few years. So we're working on a start report to be forward in June. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Lee?
Yes, I'm looking at line 127. And I'm curious about the water meter installation in Sea Shelton, because it seems like getting those water meters in and starting to bill per use is kind of like a 10% gain during the summer. And I noticed December 23 is after the summer, so is there any chance of moving that up, or is this just where we're going? Or can, yeah, I guess that's my question.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. I think these are two separate components. One is installation of the meters, and one is the review and update of the rate structure. The second part is, second project that's listed on the BPSR elsewhere, and public engagement on that will start this winter. And we are currently finalizing a resource plan for the meter installation, and a kickoff meeting on that is expected this summer. So we are really hope to get the first meters in the ground in the winter. And we expect it will take three-quarter of a year, year to get all the meters in place, because there are close to 5,000 to be put in.
Okay, thank you. Director Seegers?
Thank, first I'll follow up on that one, you were looking at item 127, right? Yeah, so I noticed that in the description, it had Phase Three District of Sea Shelton and Sea Shelton Indian Government District, and Sea Shelton Indian Government District is crossed out. Could you give us some update on that part? And then I have another question after Director McMahon.
Thank you very much. Initially, when this project was initiated, two years back, we anticipated to also install the meters within the Sea Shelton Indian Government District area. Since they've indicated that they have no desire to financially support that, and given that they're not a public, they're not a participant in the service, we can't use SUD funding to put the water meters in there. So hence, they're currently not part of the scope of the project. Thank you.
Sorry, follow up on that, then. So do we actually have a way to monitor or meter how much water goes to their properties anyway? Like, anyway, like, one meter on a line or something? Is there anything, or not? I mean, I'm looking at, we need to get this resolved with the nation, is what I'm hearing.
Currently, thank you for the question. Currently, we don't, because the, and the systems are really interconnected, so it would require several meters. But if there's no resolution to this, I think we should look into how we can actually install the meters required, and how many meters would be required in order to do that. Because for a full assessment of the demand by the community, that portion needs to be accounted for as well.
And to follow up on that, I mean, there's the differential between commercial and residential as well with, on, is, are any of the commercial properties metered at the, in there, or within the nation lands, or the industrial properties?
Thank you for the question. I would have to look into, I know all the properties that are on leased land, they are metered, and they are begging to the system, it's only on the nation's own land, the reserve land that there's no payment happening.
Follow up to that, so what you're saying is, Sanco Mall, the theater, the offices, any of their residences are not metered at this point?
Yep, that's correct.
Would that include Lehigh?
That probably would include part of Lehigh, because part of it is on nation land.
And Lehigh has their own water supply, so they're actually hardly using any water from us.
Okay, okay. We'll park that as a question for follow-up. Okay, I have Director McMahon and then Director Seegers again.
Great, meters again. Presumably, when the meters get installed, there will be a spate of leaks found. Is that part of the scope of that project, or does that, because it would have an impact, obviously, on the workload of the water staff? Thanks.
Thank you for the question. As part of last year's budget, the board approved a half FTE summer student position to support us with addressing exactly that issue. So we have additional capacity for scene for when the meters are installed and the leaks are identified, that we can actually work with the community to address them.
Great, and then over to Director Seegers.
Thank you. I'm looking at line 125, and this is about the treatment, the UV upgrade at the water treatment plant. And so, given the way this is written, it's indicating that even though this is, it's at the end of its operational life, needs to be replaced with a new UV system, we wouldn't actually be looking at installing until into 2023, and we're probably looking middle, middle to end of 2023, given that we'd need to do another budget proposal to cover the cost. So we're looking at over a year away. Is that correct?
Thank you, yeah, that's correct. We connected with Vancouver Coast Health, and confirmed that they were supportive of that approach, and they considered it to be a valid approach. So we ordered some additional parts, so we have some parts available if they break and of the current system, but the issue is that we're not able to, the system is so outdated that not all parts are being produced anymore. So, but VCH is willing to accept that risk, so we move on as we do right now. And we have a backup plan in place if the system would fail totally.
Is it a substantial increase? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes. Yes, and lead time, in terms of ordering, as always at the moment. No, it would be a substantial increase compared to the initial estimates. And when I say substantial, I mean six, seven years.
Okay, is that something that needs to come? I mean, do we have to do something now?
That's why we connected with Vancouver Coast Health, to make sure that they're aware and they're, they concur with the approach we take right now. So if there is a change in situation, we will definitely reach out to the board again and for financial plan amendments mid-year. But for now, we don't see the need to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for line items numbers 121 to 134? All right, we will flip the page and on to line items 135 to 143, page 14 out of 20 of the printed package, or page 160. page fourteen out of twenty of the printed package or page one six zero of your electronic package. And I have Director Hiltz.
Uh thanks Chair, line one thirty-six Langdale wastewater facility, the decommissioning of the the concrete building that's there and just wondering about the um the is that within uh are the costs already accounted for? Like, how's it going to be paid for? And then what's it going to look like after it's done? And does this do anything to the viability of the system? Or is it totally an unused piece of equipment now? Thanks.
Thank you very much for the question. The building is above ground where most the system is underground. So the building itself is uh the safety hazard. So the plan is to replace safe to replace the building with an wooden uh roof on the uh structure that's currently in the ground so that actually staff can operate it safely. And um it is within scope. Uh the demolition of the building is within scope of the already approved budget. So instead of waiting it, we're doing it now for staff safety purposes.
Okay. Any other questions for pages one thirty or line items one thirty-five to one forty-three? Uh seeing none, uh we shall flip the page to page fifteen of the printed package or printed spreadsheets, uh one sixty-one of your electronic or line numbers one forty-four through one sixty-one. Directors, any questions on any of these items? Director Hiltz?
Yeah, I'm just gonna it's a general question. It's about the the staff vacancies. Like, I don't know how many are missing and how much is planned for. Um it it there is an earlier question about the significance of the staff vacancies on moving projects. I'm just wondering, like, is this internal postings? Need people from off coast a little bit of background on how much is needed and what what when it's going to get um the when it's going to get resolved, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. I can I will take um first part of the answer and I'll invite Jerry Parker uh to uh to respond later. So um we have two, actually, and one I have to utility technical innovations positions within the S C R D to do internal design uh on some uh smaller projects um and to review or our um applications for uh from developers um from development related water and wastewater service connections. Both of those positions are currently vacant. One one person moved on to another position within the S C R D uh and is currently supporting the capital projects team. And the other person um moves back to Alberta because he was not able to find a place here to live with his family. So uh that leaves us with currently uh actually both people are working um in their spare time. They're doing some projects uh to kind to trying to get the most urgent stuff uh completed. But that's definitely not sufficient to keep up with all the work that's uh that is required. We have we have an ongoing posting out. We are trying to recruit people. Uh but yeah, there's a lot of uh other local governments that are currently uh looking for similar uh skills and qualifications. So it's really um yeah, it's it's difficult to to attract uh engineering technicians to the coast. Jerry, anything to add?
Thank you, Remco. Yeah, just just to add to that, yeah, there is there is a another attempt uh to find candidates uh through another posting. Um gone a little creative over time here with uh reaching out even, you know, through uh the technical schools, uh Northern Alberta Institute of Technology, for example, uh trying our best to to see if we can attract people. Um and as as has been mentioned, uh we've been fortunate in you know, a little bit of this that the staff that did come here uh were very interested in staying, but they actually just couldn't sell their property uh in Alberta um and couldn't afford to to pay for rental costs up here. So uh we're hoping that will change in the near future. Uh in the meantime, I will give it another try and see if we can be successful. Uh but it's it's an ongoing issue and I I know every single organization is facing the challenge of recruitment and uh you know, we're we're really focused on retention as well. Having said that, we've had some success. Uh you know, we have filled a number of jobs, but we've also seen jobs that we thought we had filled. Uh people have uh left uh saying either can't find a place to live, can't afford to stay here or something like that. So it's I think it's going to be a challenge for uh you know, uh quite a while to come. And it'll depend greatly on the positions. So uh there are things that uh we're looking at in terms of um uh getting creative with on-the-job training, uh bringing people along to get to higher qualifications. Certainly within our utilities department, uh we're seeing a number of staff move in that regard. So we'll we'll keep on uh working with management team to make those things happen. Thank you.
Director Bemish?
Yeah, I'd say it's still frustrating that we still see a high degree of movement within our own organizations between organizations. And so that we're we're causing each other to compete for the same group of workers. Uh and and that's really a challenge when we when we hire people and suddenly find they're moving away to another municipality in the coast here or another regional district. It's and vice versa. I mean, we're hiring from you guys. It's a it's not easy for any of us right now. We've just uh I've just uh instructed our C I O to go ahead and offer accommodation. Uh you know, we've got people coming. We've got a position coming in that the first challenge was, well, where do I live? I said, well, uh how about if we take that care of that for you and offer you three months at the um the Old Rich Hotel uh while you're looking for a place? And we need to be innovative, but we also need to be be somewhat aware that um when we put a position up and uh we're we're causing challenges for each other in some some areas. And I'd really like to see if we can better coordinate at that level. I don't know how we do that because uh we hire people, they come to the coast, they get a place to live, and then they see, oh, down the street, I can get a little bit more money. And uh you know, it it is economy of scale. A town like Gibson's cannot afford to pay the same as it uh larger municipalities do. So it's a challenge. I appreciate that.
Manager Parker, do you work with the uh with the H R departments of the other governments as well um in regards to recruiting and and connecting about these issues?
Yes, we've been having monthly meetings, actually. Uh and these are the issues that we talk about. Um and and then offline in between the meetings, we do connect uh depending on the opportunities that come along. Um we've also just recently connected in with the uh uh community services uh with their uh new H R person there. And we're awaiting uh you know, what is going to happen with the uh Shegel Nation in terms of their H R. Uh so um more can certainly be done, but I I think as as Director Bemish pointed out, um there are wage differences, there's hours of work differences, there's culture differences, there's all kinds of things that and and people have um they've also made decisions on where they live and then how far they're committing to work too. So we've seen that happen recently too. So I think it's going to be a work in progress for a while to come.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to flip the page. So line items one sixty-two through one eighty-four, uh page sixteen of twenty of the printed package or one sixty-two of the electronic package. Uh directors, any questions there? Director Lee?
Uh sorry, Chair, actually, I was waiting to ask the question about line one fifty, which is our wastewater treatment plant's public participation. Uh because of our recent mailing out of of the utility bills, um we're we're getting questions. Is there um any opportunity uh to do some of these right now for some of the noisier, well, no, the more concerned wastewater plants? Uh specifically, I'm thinking right now of Merrill Crescent. But I was wondering if we're actually ready to go.
Thank you very much for the question. Uh thank you, Chair. Um I think the answer is we hear the same questions. Um however, at this point in time, we don't we're not in a position to uh discuss any of or we haven't done the work yet required that could lead to uh result in the in a meaningful discussion on the on the rates for next year. Uh we are having the conversations with residents that are connecting with us about the uh their their current rates and we're uh willing to continue to have them. But in terms of the idea was that we would have uh we would go back to them and say, okay, this is what we're currently spending the the funds on, and this is our proposal for next year. And that work, um we're we're planning those meetings now. We are working with uh asset management as well as the communication uh division to to develop uh a a strategy and scheduling the meetings. So uh the work is underway and uh I don't see an opportunity to have separate meetings with some of the uh more concerned uh communities at this point in time. But we're happy to to take phone calls uh if if people would like to uh to connect with us.
Okay, um I actually have a meeting scheduled with them, so uh at least I'll know what the next year is. Thank you.
Okay, um now we'll move or was there any? Now can I move on?
Throw me to the lions.
Uh okay, so lines one sixty-two through one eighty-four, um which is page one sixty-two of the electronic package. I have Director Sekers.
Thank you. Uh first, number one seventy, hang on, my right line here, one seventy. Yes, says working on documentation for future transfer of truck to S C R D for the Egmont fire truck. Do we have more details on that?
Who? Oh, I'm okay. So I'm going to move in our manager of protective services. Okay, and there's Manager Trite. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just sorry, which which was that the truck they're going for for the Pender Harbor or was that the truck we're talking about?
Egmont, line one seventy. So this is the Egmont Fire Protection Egmont Fire Truck donation, working on documentation for future transfer of truck to F C R D.
So that's the one for um so Pender Harbor Fire Department has a a truck that has passed its useful life for them, but would still be of use for a small community um for such as Egmont within the the parameters of the fire underwriter survey. So we're looking at uh the possibility of taking of taking that as a donation from the Pender Harbor Fire Department and being able to get a few more years use out of it by the Egmont Fire Department as a cost-saving measure.
That's fantastic.
That's great news. I know that that was talked about, but I didn't get that from the write-up that was in here. So that's thank you. That's good.
It was a surprise to me, too.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Yeah, great news. Uh Director Sekers, more questions on that page?
Lines one seventy-one, one seventy-two, and one seventy-five. In each case, it says something like waiting for authorization agreement to be signed. And I seem to recall that the it said the same thing for about a year now. So I'm wondering what the holdups are for these agreements. Is it on our side? Is it on their side? What is it that we need to do to get these things done? Thanks.
Who has an answer to that?
These are with regards to emergency telephone nine-one-one service.
Do we know where?
Um is that's regards to the R C M P one? Or it doesn't specify? I don't I don't have that party agenda right in front of me. But um I believe that does. We've been working uh having to work with the R C M P to share some towers and antennas and so on. Uh it's been a very, very slow process. Um we have made some progress, but the R C M P is a large organization and we've dealt with the technical aspects of it. That's now been taken care of. But once that was done, then we have to do deal with the leasing department of the R C M P, which is entirely different section. And we're working through that to try to get a lease agreement established to uh for three of the sites that we'll be we'll be sharing.
So that says Planet Works. Is that the one that you're referring to?
That Planet Works Consulting is is our contractor. That's correct.
And that's with the R C M P then?
Well, the Planet Works Consulting works for us is working for us. And then we're trying to negotiate with the R C M P for shared space on uh there's three towers that we're going to be sharing. And so we we need to negotiate with the R C M P. Planet Works is is involved in that. But the holdup is at the on the R C M P side as far as as far as trying to get a a written agreement in place.
Okay, is that the same with the Tellus agreement with regards to the Roberts Creek project? That's the the line one seventy-five.
Uh no, the Roberts Creek project uh is complete now.
Okay, so that needs to be updated in here. It says it's it's twenty-five percent complete is what it's saying in here right now. All right, with regards to the with regards to the R C M P, we do have contacts with the R C M P. Um you know, we have regular mayor's meetings with them, chairs meetings with them. Um you know, perhaps we could see what we can do to advocate and and push this along up up the channels.
That would be appreciated. It seems to be very much this one department that we need to so our local attachment, for example, I mean, there is sympathetic, but I don't know that they've
Yeah.
you know, they're able to do much. But whatever help we can get, moving it along would be very much appreciated.
Definitely. We can set something up and see what we can we can do.
The administrative fairing work of the R C M P is complicated.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on that page? So that's lines items uh one sixty-two through one eighty-four. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I have one more on there. That's uh line one eighty-one. And again, this came out of a meeting that I was on yesterday with Minister Cullen and Minister Conroy with regards to the wildfire season. And they were talking about the Fire Smart Program and how the Fire Smart Program provides five hundred dollars to homeowners to do work on their land or their property to do some of the fire smarting. So I I don't know, I haven't I haven't paid that much attention to the program at yet. I need to, but I haven't. So I'm wondering, first of all, is the five hundred dollars currently aware available to people on the Sunshine Coast who are looking at doing this? And then the other piece that I asked, they announced that the amount available to homeowners had has risen to a thousand dollars per person or per household. And I asked them if it was retroactive. They didn't know that, but they were going to go look at that. So I don't know, is is the five hundred dollar rebate available? Are there a limited number of them? Is that part of our program? Can you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, so the we do not have the rebate program as part of our program uh right now. The rebate program, you have to have all wildfire wildfire mitigation specialists to do the assessments. Right now, we have our local fire smart representatives doing assessments. So we would have to have people with a a higher level of training in order to uh for members to access that uh those rebate programs. Once we have our new emergency management coordinator in place, that's going to be an area of focus for them to expand the Fire Smart Program and to uh work towards allowing getting rebates for the residents to do the work. I mean, much of the work that is required tends to be relatively low-cost um that people can do around their their own homes. Obviously, the exception for some people, if uh elderly people or or anybody with disability may find it difficult to do some of that, given the rudimentary work and may have to hire someone. But uh we are looking at expanding to include that rebate program.
So many buttons. Okay, anything else on that page? Seeing none, uh we'll go to the Seeing none, uh, we'll go to the last, uh, section here, one page, or, line items 185 through 190 on page 163 of the electronic package, or 17 on the printed package. Anything else for the, um, carryforwards? No? Okay, um, we'll look at the, I'm gonna ask, um, that we just look at the completed items on, um, so the completed items from lines 1 through to 32. Uh, any questions or comments on those? Director Seeger's.
Thank you. The first one, number one, it says, "The information and privacy coordinator role has been filled." Yee-haw. Good news.
High five for the corporate officer. She's very happy. Uh, anything else on the completed items? Director McMahon?
Well, it's nice to see completed items. I mean, given the huge queue that we've got here, this is, this is, it's very satisfying to be able to check some of them off, even if it's only 14% of the projects. I just, I'm wondering if our CAO has a comment on how we're doing with this, with this huge project workload?
It, it remains a large, ambitious workload. I'm actually really impressed with, uh, the progress made on a number of the key items, despite some of the challenges we've been facing. It's a myriad of challenges, and it's a, a bit of a testament to the efforts of a lot of the people that we have working throughout the organization.
Okay, um, so not seeing any other questions on the completed items. Uh, the canceled projects list is non-existent, um, but we do have a few deferred projects. Any questions on those or comments? And I see we've received the grant, uh, so line item number three, which is the last page of the package here, um, we've received the grant for the evacuation route planning, but the project is on the deferred list. Hmm, so that's page 166 of the, uh, electronic package, or page 20 on the printed package. Is it deferred? I thought we were working on it.
I thought that was the same with the wall.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, so we, uh, it's, no, we're moving forward with it. We, uh, it's, uh, with, we're just working out some details because the, the project is, uh, there's three different evacuation grants, um, three different jurisdictions involved, as each one got its own grant, but we're doing one RFP for one project. And, uh, so there's just a bit of a, a complication there as far as the finances. Um, but we are moving forward with it.
Great. Okay, not seeing anything else. Thank you to everyone and all of the hard work of staff on, uh, working through the very large budget projects and, uh, and providing that update. Uh, with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Annex D, pages 163 to 165 of the package, item six on the agenda. It's, "Union of British Columbia Municipalities Call for Resolutions." Over to our corporate officer, please.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this report is to review SCRD-sponsored resolutions that are going forward for consideration at the Union of B.C. Municipalities Convention this September. And it's also to identify any new resolutions the board may wish to submit directly to UBCM. New resolutions must be adopted in their final form by the June 23rd Board Meeting in order to meet the June 30th submission deadline. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so thank you for that. So, um, so we do have two on the, uh, in the staff report already, um, and I know that there was one that came up earlier around the, um, when we were talking about our GHD data and climate, and, uh, and that's regarding getting ICBC vehicular data from, um, from the province. Um, and I know Director Ties has one as well. Uh, so do we want to, um, corporate officer, with the, uh, ICBC one, do we need to flesh it out any more than the staff recommendation that was there earlier? Or any direction on that, that way?
Thank you for the question. So just for clarification, is this around accessing and having access to that data? I think, um, based on the discussion earlier today, I, I would have enough information to come back with something, unless the board wants to add to that.
Okay. Did the board want to add anything to the ICBC one? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I think. Okay, all right. Um, and then Director Ties, you had one as well.
Um, yeah, I believe everybody has it on file. Not sure why it didn't make it onto the report, but, um, uh, I guess, would we be discussing that on a different date, or do we need to pull that up out of the woodworks now?
Thank you for the question. So I would just bring this resolution forward probably to the Electoral Area Services Committee Meeting, and then, um, you could review your resolution as provided, as well as a draft resolution for the GHD data. And then any amendments we would contemplate at that time, and then I would bring them forward for adoption to the next board meeting.
Okay, is that all right? Are there any other, uh, potential UBCM resolutions that we were, that for some reason, there's something twigging in my head that we had something else floating out there? Um, so, corporate-
Sorry, we did, but I think it went to AVICC.
Yeah, I-
And is being forwarded.
Forwarded through AVICC. Okay. Uh, so corporate officer, um, our next opportunity to bring, if we had any, um, ideas, um, that, you know, something percolates after today, or, um, how is the best way for directors to bring it forward? The next meeting would be, that we have is June 9th?
So topics can be submitted to me at any time, um, but just to leave enough lead time to get them onto an agenda for an Electoral Area Services Committee Meeting, and that agenda would go out on June 10th. So I would say, within the next week, it would be ideal, and they could be brought directly to me, and I would bring those drafts forward at that time.
Okay, great. Um, oh, Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I was a little slow. Um, I was considering that we should ask the province to standardize on conditions to allow long-term RV use as residents, and specifically health, safety, and environmental concerns. Um, they, they, to me, they're avoiding their responsibility because they are being used. And if we had, if we had proper electrical to their plugs, if we had, um, the water, safe water to where they are, and if we had septic, it would seem to me that they would meet the conditions to, to allow them to be used for at least some term. I don't know exactly what it would look like, and I don't know who would check on it. Probably, probably our bylaw officers, some sort of regular schedule, but, uh, I'd like to see that one. I don't know what the other directors think, if it's possible.
Actually, that is, that's the other one that came up when we were doing Agenda Review, was around the RVs and, and some clarity around the province there. Um, I'm gonna go to Director Ties and then Director McMahon.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Um, there's, um, certainly, there should probably be some sort of standard to the RV so that you can't just pull up any RV, um, but, uh, that's, once again, something that the province needs to think about as to what that standard should be. And so I think that could be added to that motion as well.
Uh, Director McMahon?
Yep, I'm supportive, too. Uh, I don't know if there have been any other motions to AVICC or UBCM before on this topic, but, uh, housing is a huge, huge issue right now, so let's, let's, uh, let's get on it.
So, I guess, uh, our motion would be that, um, uh, so that looking around the, um, I, and, corporate officer, I can, I've done some work with the RV stuff already, and I've got some background information, so we can always touch base on that one if you want help fleshing that one out. Um, and then staff has the ICBC one, um, and then Director Ties' motion is in email. Um, so, uh, so then I guess our motion from here is that these three motions be, uh, forwarded to the Electoral Area Services Committee on June 16th, uh, for, uh, review and, uh, as possible, UBCM motions. Is that correct?
Thank you, Chair. That captures it.
Perfect. Well, can I have a mover and a second, moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Excellent. Great. Perfect. Thank you, corporate officer. Uh, next up, um, oh, sorry, yes. Is this to introduce the next two? No, this is something else. Okay. CEO McKinley.
Thank you. At the pleasure of the Chair and Committee, uh, Manager of Protective Services Trite has a, an update on one of the items that he had updated you on in the Budget Project Status Report.
Perfect. Manager Trite, over to you.
Thank you, CAO McKinley. I, I was speaking to the wrong project with regard to the donation in the Egmont. That's, uh, the one, the one I spoke about is, is a bit of a longer-term project. The donation project that was mentioned on, in the report is one where the, a truck was purchased, uh, using funds from the Egmont Society, and one of their local nonprofit organizations donated money for the purchase of a truck. The truck was purchased in the personal name of the fire chief. They bought a used one-ton truck, and at that time, that was the only way to make the purchase. So technically, that truck is in, is in the chief's name right now. That truck has to become the property of the SCRD, and so that was, that's the process that we need to follow for that, that project. So my apologies for the confusion.
Great. Thank you for clarifying, Manager Trite. We appreciate that. Perfect. Okay?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought it was.
Okay, great. Good. Okay.
The other one would have been great.
Okay, uh, so we will move on to Annex E, uh, pages 166 through 168 of the package. Number seven on your agenda, Establishment of Finance Standing Committee. Over to corporate officer, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report follows up the Chair's appointments to new standing committees to add a new finance committee. Member appointments and terms of reference for a new finance committee have been provided for the board's consideration.
Okay. Terrific. Uh, directors, any questions or comments on this? Director McMahon?
Yep, I think those terms of reference are pretty straightforward. I, I guess my only question is, originally, the way the committee was structured, I thought it would be mostly just budget meetings. But the mention of audit, so when the auditors' reports come forward and the annual reports come forward, would that go to this committee rather than wherever it's going right now?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I believe the intention is to include all of those, uh, major financial pieces within this committee, and I'm not sure if the CFO is still online, but, um, she will be the main liaison for this committee and may be able to speak further to the types of reports you may see.
CFO Perro?
Yeah, so, um, one of the suggestions from staff is, uh, to, I think, focus the financial-related items to a specific committee, so that way it would allow for, uh, business and the committee as a whole, uh, for other related operational and multi-jurisdictional items. So it would focus just specifically on, um, finance. So we also modeled this very similar to other regional districts that do have, uh, these types of committees, and so we did actually narrow the scope as, a little more than others have, um, such as financial policies, et cetera, would, would likely still go to, um, well, depending what's included in them, to committees the whole. So, um, yeah, it's, it's trying to move business, um, outside of committee the whole.
Any further questions or comments? Oh, Director Hiltz?
Thanks. So, um, like, things such as the variance reports will try to be kind of packaged up through the finance committee would be the intent?
Uh, yes, that, that would be the intent. Uh, so variance-related reports, but if there was anything specific related to a service, uh, for instance, in the past, we used to report specifically on service-related items or program-related items. So those types of things may still need to come through a committee the whole, so things like, uh, information on the green waste program, for example. So, um, that would still go through the committee the whole.
Okay. So we have, oh, Director McMahon, sorry?
Yes, I was hoping to move the recommendations on page 166.
Perfect. Thank you. I, so Director McMahon is motivating these recommendations? Do I have a seconder? I see a seconder. And do I have, oh, Director Seeger's to the motion?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to point out, I'm sure the directors saw this, but the conversation about who the Chair and Vice Chair are is changed in the report, so that Director McMahon is the Vice Chair.
And she's thrilled.
I do, thanks.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I, I like having the, you know, municipal and, um, electoral areas being represented on this committee, so, in a collaborative nature. Seeing that, uh, and no more comments or questions, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to Annex F, I'm going, and that's pages 169 through 170 of the package, number eight on your agenda, and I'm gonna put it on over to the CAO. Mr. McKinley, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thinking on, uh, I'll, I'll do a bit of an intro to the next two items, and then Manager Trite will be available to answer any technical questions. Thinking about these next two items reminded me of, uh, one of my favorite old Far Side cartoons, where there's a guy getting up in the morning, sitting in his bed, looking at a sign that says, "First pants, then your shoes." And, uh, in this case, we've got these annual grants that are available through UBCM for emergency operations and, uh, emergency social services, where they provide 100% of the funding for eligible activities. They do require, when you apply, that you have a resolution of support from your board, or in the case of a municipality, from your council. UBCM's super flexible with the timelines, they don't actually get too concerned if the resolution follows the application, however, it's not exactly the best process. And in this case, we did put our pants on in front of our shoes. So you're being asked for permission, or your shoes on in front of, in front of our pants, yes. Get it right, Dean. So we've, if, if you decide to provide the permission to apply for these grants, at least one of them will be able to quickly tell you, not only have we applied, we've successfully received it, we have not entered into an agreement for it yet, but you'll love the speed at which we can go from your permission to grant approval on one of the two projects, and the other one, the speed at which we've at least made the application will impress you as well. So I will commit that we will try to put our pants on first next time, and with that, I'll let you ask any questions you may have of Manager Trite.
Okay, directors. We'll start with Annex F, uh, so number eight then. Um, are there any questions on, on the staff report? Director Hiltz?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Just wondering if the amount asked for is gonna be the full $25,000. Thanks.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
Uh, Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just looking on page 170, uh, the deadline, uh, February 25th, uh, expected sort of 90 days from the submission of the application, which means theoretically, you know, any day or yesterday. I'm just wondering if that's still expected, or if, uh, staff have an update that the announcements might be delayed. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Uh, you're correct, it, we should be hearing-
Thank you for the question. Uh, you're correct. It, we should be hearing from them any day now. Uh, we haven't, we haven't heard yet. Sometimes we hear early and depending on how busy they are, uh, sometimes it goes the full 90 days or even a bit more. So, but I, I would anticipate that probably within the next week we'll hear.
Okay. Not seeing any other questions, so I'm going to ask for, uh, motion, uh, we have the staff recommendations on page 169, uh, for a grant application for SCAP EOC Communication Modernization to be submitted to UBCM municipalities on behalf of the SCRD? May I ask for that, please? So moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, we will move on to Annex G, pages 171 to 172 of the package, number nine on your agenda. And that's the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund Grant Approval for the, um, for the Sunshine Coast Emergency, uh, Sunshine Coast Emergency Program Emergency Support Services Reception Center Modernization. That's a mouthful. Um, Director Seegers?
I am pleased to move the recommendations on page 171.
Terrific. And I have a seconder from Director McMahon. And any questions? Director Hiltz? Do you have a question?
Yes, a question on the, the, on the traveling, on the traveling kit. Um, sounds like something bigger than a go-bag. Like, uh, is this something like you throw on a pickup truck or, um, and, and you're, you're referencing the islands and that. I'm just wondering, uh, coordination with the fire equipment groups on the islands is, is it like a standard package that you put together or what, what is this thing, I guess, in short?
Yeah, we're, we're still kind of working out the details of what it will, what it will involve. The idea is if somebody said had, was burned out of their home over there and wanted some assistance, I mean, typically for accommodation, they could come to the mainland. People often want to stay near their homes, so if they were accommodated, wanted to accommodate with somebody else on the island, the SS team would still have a kit that they could take over there and, uh, work with the people to try to get them some support for a couple of days and provide what, you know, whatever, whatever we could for them. It just makes it a bit, bit more complicated, uh, as they are in that more remote location.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. So next up Annex H, pages 173 to 175 of our package, the West Can, and that's number 10, West Can Marine Crossing. And, uh, Director Ties is going to recuse himself?
Yeah, I have to recuse myself, uh, as the contractor has, uh, contacted me, uh, to potentially book accommodation at, at my marina. So I, I have some pecuniary interests at this point. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So we will just allow for Director Ties to leave the space and then we will, um, we will go to, um, our Capital Projects Senior Coordinator, Trevor Rattie.
Uh, thank you Chair Pratt. The Chapman Water System includes a segment of water main that crosses underwater at the mouth of Secret Cove between West Can Road and San Sushi Road. In recent years, numerous repairs have been completed on this crossing and a new leak was identified in spring of 2022. It became apparent that a full replacement of this segment of water main is required. In spring 2021, staff procured an engineering company to complete the design and secure the permits required for this water main replacement. Presented for your consideration is staff's recommendation for award of a construction contract to Razor Bernard Diving. Their services will complete the installation of the marine crossing water main. The recommended contract value is $600,000. Due to restrictions on working in the marine environment from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, this work must be completed between July 1st and September 1st. Staff recognize that this is prime recreational boating season and a communication plan has been developed to notify local residents and boaters of the upcoming work in effort to minimize the disruption. Staff are happy to discuss any questions you may have.
Okay. Does, are there any questions? Uh, I'll start with Director McMahon and then Director Toth.
Perhaps I didn't read closely enough, but I'm just curious, how old is this water main and how long do we think the new one's gonna be good for? I mean, gosh, this is expensive. Just saying. Thanks.
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, the existing water main was installed, I believe, in 1980. Uh, so it's been about 40 years. Um, the expectancy, design expectancy that we've heard from our engineers is about 50 years is, is about typical for marine environment. Um, the, the leak in question is at a bit of a pinch point where the water main transitions from dry land to the, the water. So, um, it, it's a bit of a pressure point where the leak has developed.
Okay, Director Toth?
Thank you Chair. Uh, I'd like to move the recommendations on page 173 as presented.
Great. And do I have a seconder? I have a seconder. Director Seegers, any further conversation on this? And this is getting forwarded to the Board meeting, uh, later today as well, so the contract can be executed. Um, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, if somebody could get Director Ties, that would be fantastic. That would be great. Oh, there he is. Oh, wow. Okay. Uh, okay, so up next, we have, uh, Annex I of our package, pages 176 to 184. I'm just going to promote, uh, our manager, uh, Manager Mia. Um, okay, so this is for number 11. Uh, this is the Proposed Amendments for Water Supply Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. And this is our GM of Infrastructure and then our Manager of Strategic Initiatives. So I'll give it over to Remco to start, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, the current WASAC, the term of the current WASAC committee is ending in June. That's the end of their two-year term. And as, uh, per the Terms of Reference, all committee members are, uh, at that time, um, their term ends. So, um, while reviewing the Terms of Reference, uh, in anticipation of, uh, further application process for new members, we, uh, wanted to take the opportunity to actually review the Terms of Reference and, um, confirm if the Terms of Reference and scope, et cetera, is still clear. So what we did is, we took a look at the Terms of Reference and we clarified the purpose and the scope and, um, to really fit the current needs of, um, of the SCRD in terms of its focus on water supply, uh, strategy that's currently being developed. Uh, while the initial purpose and scope is really broadly defined, it's, uh, more specifically defined now to, to the actual, uh, work that's currently underway. At same time, we, uh, use the opportunity to update the Terms of Reference, uh, on some operational and administrative components. And, um, if, uh, approved by the Board, staff, uh, will initiate the application process for a new WASAC, uh, to ensure that, um, appointments can be made in September by this Board and a new committee, uh, WASAC committee could start in, uh, October. And staff are here to ensure any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. I will look to Directors, uh, for any questions or comments or, uh, move of the recommendations. Trying to make eye contact with anybody who may, ah, Director Hiltz, there we go.
Thanks Chair. I'll take a couple of questions at it. I'm, I'm gonna just start at, it was 1.2. Um, and, and generally, I, I, I think the, the refocusing of the Terms of Reference is good and we'll package it up a little bit nicer. So the, the changing of, uh, 1.2 from an advisory group to a forum group, yet the, the title is still an advisory committee. So I'm, I'm just getting a little, is it advisory, is it a forum? So just with, kind of paralleling of the language. So it, should the title actually be changed if it's a forum rather than an advisory group? That's the first kind of question. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Under the, uh, the policies of the SCRD, this committee is an advisory committee. It serves, it advises the SCRD Board and informs and it's, um, and, uh, that's her role and it performs at the leisure of the Board. So if there's a desire, so we, uh, provide an opportunity, provide a platform. Um, that's why we use the word forum. It's, it's, uh, a, a, uh, a meeting place.
Okay. Uh, Director Hiltz, did you have more?
I think I do. Um, where was I? Um, again, just some language, it's 3.4. Um, uh, the, the term liaison, so we have non-voting liaisons, elected and staff liaisons, and then, uh, we have, uh, a secretary who will be appointed. So just, I'm, I'm just wondering, i- is it confusing for, to have elected and staff to be liaisons? I'm just, you know, we, um, as an elected person, part of the committee was, where do the boundaries shift? And, uh, i- if staff had thoughts on, is it, is it a support person rather than a liaison person? That's kind of what I saw. The, the staff person was a support person. Um, so I'm just wondering how staff view that liaison word and how, uh, the committee might, uh, respond to it. Thanks.
Yeah, Edbrock, the, Mayor Edbrock, do you want to take first quick adisma? As the liaison at the moment?
It's a very good question. Uh, our roles are, uh, between the staff liaison and the board elected liaison are obviously different, um, in the way that staff provide, um, reports and answer questions and, um, coordinate with the Chair and the Vice Chair to organize agendas, meetings and whatnot. Um, and you're right that the, I think, I, to speak on behalf of committee, I might be stretching, but I think they did appreciate having elected officials there, um, to listen and, um, climb in and add, add their thoughts and they were often called upon during the two-year term. Um, but as for terminology, and nothing is coming to me, I, I guess what I would said, suggest is consistency. And I know that on the APCs, for example, um, they may have an elected official, but not a staff liaison.
In addition to that, I, I think there is, um, I concur with your observation that there is a difference in the role, uh, because I think the board liaison is really a liaison between one body, the board, and WASAC. And for staff, that's not. So another opportunity would be, uh, that we change the word for staff person in the staff coordinator. We have coordinating capacity, that serves in a coordinating capacity as a resource. Our establishment members may approve. I can totally see, uh, that clarification be made in the text.
Do you want, do you want, okay, Director Seegers?
All right. One of the que, one of the conversations we had at the, um, Agenda Review was about having our committees, in this case, you know, the WASAC committee, um, make the Chair of the Board a de facto member of every one of the committees. Um, they can go or not, but they are also an additional resource then to the liaison in support of staff in a meeting. Um, I don't know if that's something we wanted to address here now or is that something we wanted to do going forward?
Is it something that we want to, um, you know, put as part of the Board Chair responsibilities or, you know, that the Board Chair, like maybe just put it in a statement in the Board Chair rules and responsibilities as being a de facto member of all advisory committees?
Would that do it though then?
Would it also need to be added to the Terms of Reference of each committee too?
Thank you for the question. So, um, yes, I would recommend if that is in fact what we wish to do, we would add that to the Terms of Reference. And legislatively, there's nothing preventing us from doing that. If the Board wishes to have that discussion, we can certainly include it in these or any Terms of Reference going forward.
I, I'll speak to that. Um, particularly at the be, the beginning of a term, you have new directors potentially who are appointed as liaisons to the various committees. Don't quite know the role they play yet as a director and in the relationship between the Board and the, and the staff and the community. Um, I wouldn't see the Chair going to every meeting, but I would see that that would allow the liaison to say, you know what, maybe come and attend some of these meetings and, and assist or whatever at, you know, for the first while. Or some conversations coming up, I'd like the Chair to be there to be part of that. And it would actually have the Chair be in the meeting, particularly when you do these, these Zoom meetings, rather than just in the gallery and not be able to provide the assistance. So that's kind of the rationale behind what I'm putting forward here.
Director McMahon, I saw your hand up briefly. Did you have anything? Okay, perfect. Were there any other questions? Um, do we want to add that in as, um?
Yeah, looking where we were, had put that in, it was, going back to the other one.
I'm wondering even, uh, if putting it as part of 3.2, like almost making it, um, it, making it part of, uh, of 3.2, um, or making it a new, or 3.2A and then 32, 32B about the comment about the Board Chair, that the Board Chair B is a de facto member of the WASAC committee and may attend as re- requested or required?
That works for me.
Does that work for any, okay, uh, Director Toth?
I guess, I guess the only question is, do we need a clarification in there on whether they're a voting or non-voting member? Cause the other stuff specifically states, uh, non-voting members.
I would say it'd be a non-voting, yeah. At, at these committee, that this committee, it's, yeah, all the elected are non-voting. So, okay. Um, so we can add that in as an amendment before we, before we adopt or appro, oops, sorry, uh, approve the amended Terms of Reference. Are there any other changes that we want to make before we adopt or approve the amended Terms of Reference? Uh, Director Hiltz?
Uh, the, the suggestion of the coordinator language for the staff position, to change that liaison capacity to coordinator was, I think, the suggested language.
Okay. So coordinator language, does that work for staff as well?
It's section 3.4, first sentence. In a coordinating capacity as a resource.
Perfect. And was there, I'm seeing Director Toth?
Yeah, it's also in 4.7C.
Okay, 47C. Okay. So staff has those changes? Perfect. All right. Anything else? Nope. Director Seegers?
All right. So what recommendation am I gonna make here? If I go back to?
Back to page 176.
And that the Board approved the amended Water Supply Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as amended.
And do I have a seconder? I see a seconder. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will call the question on that. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you very much to staff and our volunteer committee for, um, for all of the work that they do. So thank you. That's amazing. Um, okay. So I have had a request for a short break before we go into the last item on our agenda because it is a lengthy item. Um, but I also know that we're at, we're after 12:30 and I have a feeling that we probably want to push through. So how do people feel? Get her done? I'm hearing a get her done. Okay, well, Donna, you can always recuse yourself. Okay. Get up and walk around. It's okay. Yeah, you know, this is why we need, sometimes need standing desks, right? So, yes. Okay. All right. So first off, what I'm going to do, well, um, So, yes, okay. All right. So first off, what I'm going to do, well, everybody stretches and takes a moment, it takes a movement break, because I'm going to promote all of our staff to panelists. So, um, yeah, so everybody stand up, have a movement break, please, everyone in here. Yeah, so feel free to have a quick stretch. Thirty-second dance party. Yes, we're still in session here. Okay. All right, GM Gagnon, thank you, your, you know, tenacity here in staying on. And, uh, okay, so the last item on our agenda, certainly not the least, is Annex J, pages one eighty-five to two fourteen of the package, and that's item twelve, the Community Services Department twenty twenty-two Q one report. And before you begin, the first thing I'd like to say is I love the format of the report on the, like, the sizing of the pages. I don't know why, it just really appeals to me. Less when it's such dense information, it's nice to have a shorter page to go to. But I will lead it over to you for introduction. So GM Gagnon.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that feedback. I am very pleased to present to you a new and hopefully improved, not only look, but content to our Community Services Quarterly Reports. So I just will draw your attention to a couple of different things, and then all of our managers here, with the exception of Manager Van Belsen, are here to answer questions that you might have specific to their areas, and I will do my best to to represent Manager Van Belsen in terms of facilities and building maintenance. But the first thing is, I just want to draw your attention to that we have moved away from, I think, what I believe to be a regurgitation of sort of day-to-day tasks to more focusing on what our strategic priorities are as divisions within Community Services. And what are we focusing our efforts on over and above day-to-day operations? And so what you see in front of you is really our service plan light with an additional column called Progress Report. And that is what we intend to present to you as the year goes by, but we certainly, I'm curious and I'm open to feedback about that particular direction that we're taking. And the second thing is, you will note that there are different, and in many cases, additional, what we're calling key performance indicators. And so we spent some time as a team at the end of last year, and we we talked about what are, what are the things that, you know, the public and the board needs to know about our operations? And what would be good information to help keep you informed? So this is our first kick at that. And again, we're open to feedback and, you know, any comments that you might have. Recognizing we have some limitations with the the programs that we have in terms of what data we can actually produce. And we'll consider that in future years as we maybe navigate to new recreational software or what have you, as we work with BC Transit on performance reviews. So there could be more to come. There could be additional changes, but we felt this was a good place to start our twenty twenty-two. And you will also note, lastly, that there are some KPIs that we will only produce at year end because it probably makes sense just to do them once a year, as there may be very little change throughout the year, or year end presents the best representation of all of the the data included. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board to direct any questions that might have to the relevant manager and or myself for general feedback. So we thank you.
Terrific. Okay, well, thank you, GM. And so what I'm going to do is, because it's a very comprehensive report, we are going to go through, I think, page by page is probably the easiest, unless directors just want to hop and jump in wherever they are, and we can just scroll through. We will scroll through. Director McMahon?
Personally, I'd sort of like to take it by topic, like recreation, and then move on to transit and so forth. But my first question was, how are usage rates calculated? Like, is this calculated on the usage rate between, say, nine and five, or between eight and nine? Or or twenty-four hours? Or so how do you come up with these numbers?
So I I just will make sure that I clarify the question. So when you talk about usage rates, you may be talking about a variety of different KPIs that are in the the report. So a usage rate, for example, for ICE would be related to the amount of time the ICE is available to be booked. So that could be eight in the morning till midnight. And so each of them are defined a little bit differently, and we've tried to put that in the report. So if there are areas where it's unclear and we we get to that section, I'm happy to try and, or our managers are happy to try and provide more information. A community hall, for example, would be the hours that it's open for booking. So typically, that would be, you know, the eight AM till the ten PM. But again, our manager of recreation can provide those specific requirements around, or what those specific details are. But it's really in general when the service can be provided.
Go for it.
Yeah, I was just curious about sports fields and community halls and and public use rooms like at GAC in in particular, because, you know, one can, in theory, use a field for a lot of hours, and there have been cases where we've had twenty-four hour bookings too, like with the festivals. So I was just curious about that. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so let's start with page one eighty-six. So this is Parks, line six fifty. So this is starting with parks maintenance, playground maintenance, sports field maintenance, management and maintenance of community halls and campground operations. Any questions on that? Director Hiltz?
Thanks. It's on the parks maintenance. It's the staff scheduling, moving to seven-day operations. So just a little bit of detail on the the time says May to September, so just a little bit of detail on that. Thanks.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Yeah, actually, that's reflecting a schedule that's that's coming up. We're just looking at staffing up our roster. We're nearly there, and by the end of May, we'll be, parks operations will be operating on a seven-day week schedule throughout the busy season. Thank you very much.
Certainly, follow-up?
Follow-up. Is this any different than previous years, or is this, that's, I guess, the question, is it is it different from previous years?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, and thanks for the question for the follow-up through the chair. It's different through previous years in that we were typically Monday to Friday. This year, because parks is seven-day-a-week service, we are, much like recreation, we're moving towards seven days a week in parks operations. Thank you.
Okay, Director McMahon and then Director Seekers? Sorry, then Director Seekers?
Thank you. I'm looking at the same one, the same box. And in that same box, where we're looking to move to seven-day operations, it says, due to a number of staff absences and the delay in recruitment of new positions, work is starting to get backlog. So I've seen this through a number of the the departments. So parks, I believe I see it under maintenance. I don't know, I don't recall where else I've seen it, but I know it's in here and that that is having an impact on the work, the workload and and the projects that are getting done. So I'm just wondering, is it, are we having internal movements? Are we having people leave? Are we just, is our HR department just so have so many people to fill spaces with that we're not getting to these? So just some, something, what's behind this, and are we making some headway?
So Shelley, do you want to take that, and then probably Jerry as well? Go for it.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to just start, and then I will turn it over to our manager of HR. It is, I think, throughout the organization, something we're experiencing, and I believe there was some talk about that earlier in your meeting. You know, of course, we have the, we do have the delay that after, we have to wait until any new position is approved through budget. And so then I can imagine that HR is flooded with all sorts of new positions and trying to get those posted and recruited. So there's a bit of a, sort of a bump in the system where we have a lot of recruitments that occur at the same time. But we do have ongoing, and I think Jerry can be able to speak to the the volume that we have. We have offered positions and and actually had them decline, and so we've had to repost. And that's for a number of reasons. We have had some shifting internally, especially from our facilities to our parks area and then into our building maintenance. So it is a combination of of all of the above, I guess, is the answer. But I think it's it's probably a good time for HR to highlight just the volume of of what they're experiencing in their area.
Go ahead, GM, Manager Parker.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, GM Gagnon. A few things just to to shed a little more light on on what has been happening in our friends in parks. My goodness, what a, what a year of change they've had there. You know, it started with the retirement of the manager at the end of last year, appointment of Mr. Kevin Clarkson there to take over. And with that, a number of other changes, retirements, we've had the Parks Operations Coordinator promoted. Vacancy for Senior Parks Worker was filled. His backfill was actually working in another division, could not be released quickly to start in the role. And then you throw in a few injuries or illnesses, and we've had four different staff members miss significant amounts of time. So on top of that, as as was mentioned, you know, the board approved what it what ended up being four additional postings. All of them closed in April. All of them, the shortlisting occurred, and all of them are at various stages of being filled. We have staff starting a little over a week from now. And today, we're actually just, where are we now, May twenty-six? We literally have just put out our sixtieth, six zero, our sixtieth posting for twenty twenty-two. So, um, yes, there's been a flurry of activity. A lot of it does occur right after budget is approved. And there's more to come. So, um, but we're making a lot of headway, and I'm I'm very pleased. We also had, as I think the board knows, we had turnover in our HR staff. We were delighted to recruit Mara Farmer to be the the new HR assistant. And Amy Turnbull was actually able to step up from casual to part-time staff. And of course, none of this happens without Lindsay Stoker's ongoing assistance. So we've been very active, and there's much more to come. So thanks, and and I appreciate the patience of all the staff in all the various areas that are looking for some ongoing support from HR. Thank you.
Thank you for the comprehensive reply and explanation. I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else for page one eighty-six? Not fulsome. A comprehensive synopsis. Okay, moving on, page one eighty-seven. So this is from Core Operations, Completion of Carry Forward Projects, Asset Management Plan, Document Park Service Levels, Update Important Bylaws and Policies Impacting Parks. Directors, any questions on page one eighty-seven? Okay, Director Hiltz?
Thanks, Chair. Asset management, major assets is now complete. So just what's constituting a major asset and the scope of the work left to go?
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Major assets, I guess you could categorize as all of the major assets, infrastructure and park amenities at all of our kind of high-use, high-priority parks, the ones like Cliff Belker, Solms Park, Shirley Macy, the ones that we we really approach with with a standard of service, high-quality standard of service, regular visits, regular inspections and maintenance, those sorts of things. We've also made some significant progress on a lot of the other properties, some of our community plot lots, for example, some of the, you know, assets related to the sports fields, playgrounds, campgrounds, those sorts of things. The asset registry is nearing completion. It's being tied in with some of our asset requirement obligations work as well, which is helping us to kind of collaborate a lot of the agreements, understand our obligations and the costs that come long-term with managing those assets. And next steps are to work on kind of strategically refining those and working towards kind of asset management plan strategies and developing some work related to some of our service level planning and how that ties into the maintenance of our assets. And it's all in preparation to, you know, look at coming to the board by twenty twenty-three and delivering a report on an asset management plan and strategy for park service. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Yeah, just a clarifying question. Major assets like community halls seem pretty straightforward, but I'm thinking like a trail. Is is a trail, is a major asset, is like, depending on the size of use of the trail and the number of steps? Or do you get, is it, could a trail be a major asset? Thanks.
I see our GM has her hand raised, so I don't know if the GM wants to respond, or Mr. Clarkson?
If I may, Chair, I would like to suggest that where we're at right now is an inventory of our assets. And so that includes all assets from buildings to horizontal assets like trails. We haven't got our trees in there. We haven't got some of our assets, but, you know, a tree is an asset, and at some point in time, we need to start to to get a complete inventory. So I would suggest that the last year, and last summer especially, parks did have staff specifically hired, approved by the board during the summer, to work on that asset inventory. It's in GIS, which is great. There's some condition assessments that go along with that. But we are trying to develop as comprehensive of an inventory of all parks assets as we can. It's not quite there, but we're we're almost there. And then really, the work begins, because we have to do condition, condition assessments, we need to assign values, we need to look at that long-term capital planning in order to pull that plan together to bring to the board. And so we're actually looking at potentially even doing, I have yet to talk to the asset management team about it, but breaking it into segments even, because it's a, it's an overwhelming task in terms of the just the amount of assets, so that we can actually see some some ground made on this this project. Because I go back in reports and I see this has been something that we've been anticipating for, I think, almost four years now. And so progress has been made, but, and we are definitely one step closer. But I think we might want to look at at chunking it a little bit so that we can actually get some some long-term capital plans in place.
Okay, Director Seekers?
If if you've got staff out taking pictures of things to put into your inventory, I would suggest you communicate. We had, when we did this in the District of Seashore with our Parks Department, the community was saying, why have you got your plant, your parks people out taking pictures all the time? Shouldn't they be working? So just some communication would be nice. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for page one eighty-seven? Move on to page one eighty-eight. Not seeing anyone jumping up and down. Oh, Director Bemish?
Yeah, I guess it's just a frustration that I experienced myself, and I'm a very frequent user of Sprockets, every morning, in fact. And, you know, the the numbers of times that I go up there and I find garbage dumped, garbage left. I've got, I actually have to walk my dog away from the parking lots to keep him out of the garbage as he gets out of the car. And this morning, I was up there, and the first parking space, as you arrive at the, at Sprockets is now full of dirt. Somebody's dumped a load of dirt there last night overnight, because I was there yesterday. And and so it's very frustrating up there, and I don't know if signage could do that, or closing the gate, or ask, just asking people who use the park to keep an eye open for that type of activity. I've been up there and get out of the car, and then somebody's dumped all their fish guts and their fish things. It's a little bit out of sight. It's convenient, and you can drive a car to it, you can throw your stuff out, and you can drive away quickly. And it's very frustrating, and I'm sure your your workers have a frustration with that as well. But it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge, because it's a heavily-used park at times of day. You go up there at seven-thirty in the morning, there's a half dozen cars up there, and people walking, hiking, dog walking, and things like that. But just getting past the parking lot now is a challenge, so I appreciate the challenge of that.
Okay, I don't know. GM Gagnon?
Just quickly, thank you very much for that. And of course, just because we we have the listening public on, we do accept, you know, phone calls to our parks line or to our parks email if people notice things. The sooner that we can get that notification, the better, and the more able we are with two. And the more able we are to work with community partners and/or send our parks staff out to take care of it. But I appreciate the comments. You are correct.
And probably always good to note to report to the RAPP line, the RAP line. Anytime there's garbage or something that appears that it should not be there. So it's not just for poaching, it's also for reporting pollution. So, okay, nothing else for page 188?
Yeah, just going to follow up on the reporting aspect from the public. So Info@SCRD is, is that still considered a one-stop way to get through the parks? Or do people need to be more specific? Is generally just say Info@SCRD and it'll get somewhere? So should there be something different for parks?
Well, thank you for the question and through the chair. If it's sent to Info@SCRD, it will get to us. The more direct route is parks departement@scrd.ca. That comes right to the Parks Administration, gets forward to the appropriate staff to deal with it. Thank you.
Okay. Director Bemish, I see your hand's still up, but I'm assuming you've answered your, or asked your question. Okay, so page 189, the KPIs. So we've got our community hall bookings, our sports field bookings, and then the notation as our GM had mentioned earlier about some of the KPIs that will be reported on annually, like the number of trails, kilometers of trails, acres of parkland, and Catherine Lake campground statistics. So I have Director McMahon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, holy cow, is Shirley Macy Park busy. Is this, this, were page 189?
Yeah, page 189 under the sports field bookings.
That's 67%. That's a, I should say that that's probably the highest it's ever been. Any comments from staff?
I'll actually refer this one maybe to Manager Don. As most of the booking is done to Recreation, he might be able to provide sort of a history for you.
Thank you for the question. So usage is significantly up. We've got a couple of new user groups that have come forward. Also, the user group sizes have increased. So, for example, soccer leagues, baseball leagues, you know, their usership is up quite a bit as a result of COVID. So I think that's a very good indicator why the numbers are up. And it was also part of our strategy with reporting this information where we grouped Shirley Macy 1 and 2 as, you know, one entity. So if one's being booked, you know, it's captured as a booking on both. Hopefully that helps clarify. Thank you.
Okay, Director Hiltz.
I gotta say, thanks. Thanks for the table format. I really do like the landscape format as well. So just to, but I guess I'm looking at the usage rates. And so the question goes, there is capacity there for the community to use the facilities. Is it possible to go to 100% capacity in these things? Is that like, would that be a long-term target to maximize the? I'm going to just look at the halls. Is, would that be a target that we would actually look for as 100% usage? Is that even possible, I guess? Thanks.
If I may, Chair. That's a great question. And I, I think 100%, I've never actually been in a facility that's been at 100%. You might get the odd week that you actually get to that on ice, maybe. If you look at a high percentage of efficiency and use of pools, it's like 40% is typical. So really depends facility for facility. But I think 100% is a rather lofty goal. And my intent with us actually tracking this is that we can track it year to year and we can achieve to increase and look back. And if our usage is dropping, there's signs and symbols for us that we need to do something different. So this is a good business tool and mechanism by which we can monitor our usage and either increase our marketing or what have you to be able to react and respond. I don't know what a goal is yet because we haven't done this long enough for me to tell you what a good year was and what a good year wasn't. But I think as time progresses, we might have better, a better idea of what goal we're shooting for.
Director McMahon.
Yeah, similar question. I was just wondering what's typical for a community hall? I wouldn't expect 100%, but would 25% be typical for a well-used community hall? Do we know? Or are we just inventing this as we go?
I think, to be honest, especially here, we're not sure. We haven't tracked this stat before, so this is a new one for us. You know, we were able to pull some things from 2019 because that's the last year that we were busy, but it was a manual process, so a very time-consuming process. So I didn't want to go back too far. I'd rather go forward. But I think, you know, if you look at usage rates of, you know, anything below 20%, that, it's not great, right? But if your usage rates go from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, then, you know, I would consider some of that very non-prime time. And so you're not going to have high usage rates during that time. Maybe you want to search or seek, try and get high-usage times, prime time, like 7:00 to 10:00. Or, you know, or then when you're really, you don't have a lot of usage, maybe we seek out different types of usage that we never have. Maybe we put RFPs out for use of a community hall for a daycare or whatever in the morning, whatever is legislatively possible, because there's restrictions around that as well. But I think this is the beginning for us of really understanding what's happening in our facilities through data and then being able to make business decisions accordingly.
Okay. Next up, we've got cemeteries on page 190. Any questions on our cemeteries? Yeah. Everyone's dying to ask questions. Okay, so, and then page 191 is also with cemeteries too. I'm not seeing any burning questions. So we'll move on to page 192, Dakota Ridge. Directors, any questions on page 192? Okay, I'm going to scroll down to page 193, which is still on Dakota Ridge. Scrolling, 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 keep that finger scrolling. Next up, page 194, Building Maintenance. Page 195, Community Recreation Facilities. Page 196. 197. Oh, okay. Director Hiltz?
Sure, Director McMahon might have been just, it's an interesting chart. And I'm just, it's, I'm just looking for staff's kind of perspective of the intent behind the energy consumption. What would be the intent of presenting this? To me, it makes sense. From a staff point of view, what's the intent behind this? And also the natural gas. Thanks.
Sure, that's a great question. The intent behind this was to really look at the energy efficiencies of our buildings. And when, when we have high energy consumption, when we don't, we'll see ebbs and flows between, you know, when the ice is in, when the ice is out. But it helps us to sort of track that per building. And if we do renovations to the building or, you know, we replace certain items with more energy-efficient items, we should see, there should be an indicator of that. And so really, it's our one way of tracking the efficiency of our building is by monitoring, you know, the utility piece of it.
Follow-up and then Director McMahon, sorry about that.
And so I guess what I don't know, energy costs for recreation facilities is a large chunk of the operating budget then. As I, I've never really thought about how much is used, but it's a lot of kilowatt hours and a lot of gas. So it is a significant chunk of operations then.
I see that as a yes. Okay, Director McMahon.
Yeah, I think I figured this out, but percentage of total 615 facilities. So when I see GAC 2022 is 41%, that means that 41% of our utility costs for recreation facilities are GAC. Is, have I got that straight?
Yes, and so this, thank you. This does not include Pender Harbor, which is why it says 615, because Pender is its own facility. So you are correct. That is the total percentage of usage.
Okay. All right. So anything for page 198? Director Ties?
Yeah, I'm just seeing with interest that the Sunshine Coast Arena is only responsible for about 24%. And I would think that in GAC, the major user would also be the ice surface. So, and I'm just surprised that there's so much difference between the two facilities in energy consumption. Just an observation.
Okay. Moving on, page 199, Recreation Services Division, line 614. Director McMahon.
Yeah, a general question. When we say program instructors, are they employees of the SCRD? Or are they contractors? Or are they independent people who hold programs in our facilities?
I'll let me, I'll let Manager Don respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So with the exception of Aquatic Fitness, pretty well, all of our programs and fitness classes are run through contract instructors, no internal staff. Thank you.
Okay. GM Gagnon?
Just to further provide an answer, I believe there was a little bit more of in that question. But that's for our internal programs. So when we talk about program delivery, we're referring to programs at the SCRD plans and implements. On the next page, we talk about community group and partnerships. That's where those other groups, so whether it's Vancouver Coastal Health or another organization comes into our facilities and uses our facilities for their programs. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Donna.
So do we have a policy about what sort of programs that we prioritize to offer? Like lifeguard training versus basket weaving? Or, yeah, just generally, do we, do we have core programs that relate to, say, the use of the ice or the use of the pool as opposed to flower arranging? Thanks.
So that's a really big question. But I would suggest that one of the things that we are currently right in the middle of is a program review. And that is talking about what programs we offer, what the community wants, you know, what we should be doing, what we need to do better, what our demographics are, what type of programs we should be offering. So that's all part of that review. So that's more coming on that. We don't have a policy, to my knowledge. We don't have a policy on who we rent to either, to my knowledge. So there's lots of work to be done in the future. And we've got lots on our plate, so we're prioritizing. But the program review will give us a really good start to understanding the needs of our community. I believe there's a public participation going on right now, just launched yesterday, around, you know, what are, what people want on the ice, what they want in our buildings, what they want in our fitness rooms, what they want in our pools. And that will give us, I believe, a really good tool for planning. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So anything else on page 199? Or 200? 201? 202? I do like the Emerging Issues section as well. Teased out, GM Gagnon, that's, that's good. I like that personally. Next up, page 203, Pender Harbor Aquatic and Fitness Center, line 625. And then, of course, we've lost Director Lee, but he'll be right back. Over to you, Director Seegers.
Thank you. I wanted to look at the emerging issues on the bottom of page 202.
Okay.
Let me just see. So am I assuming from this that we offer Red Cross courses in our pools? And Life Saving Society is what we would be, or Swim for Life program is what we'd be transitioning to? So we only offer Red Cross right now? It wasn't too clear on here, just that said that they were doing this.
Sure. If I may, Chair, I'll start and then I will turn it over to Manager Don. So to be very clear, most aquatic facilities across the country use Red Cross. It was a very, very popular program, and they are winding down. So yes, we had Red Cross as the, for all of our swim lessons. So if any of you have young children, you know, you were a crocodile or you were a dolphin or whatever, and that all has a curriculum that comes with it as well. So that is winding down, and that leaves us with transitioning over to the Life Saving Society for their Swim for Life. So I will let Manager Don speak to a little bit about the implication of what that means to us internally, but probably more importantly, what it means to the public and the amount of communication that we have scheduled upcoming to make sure that we transition and inform the public.
Thank you, GM Gagnon. Yeah, I'll just add that, as GM Gagnon alluded to, there, this program is, you know, it's in place in Ontario, but otherwise, for the rest of the country, it was largely Red Cross. This kind of came as a surprise this year as Red Cross is focusing on humanitarian aid and other resources versus the swimming program. But we're really confident with the transition to life-saving, with it already being in place for so long, that we should hopefully seamlessly transition into this. But there's going to be some communications, which are kind of already underway. We're adding inserts into swimming lessons report cards, things like that, just to try and get the word out. And we have a bit of a roadmap that we've developed over the next couple of months where we lead towards implementation, which will occur in October. We have until the end of this year to make the transition. We think we can successfully reach it by October. And then as far as the staffing side of things, all of our staff need to pretty well transfer their certifications over to the Life Saving Society or the Swim for Life program. So that's underway. We're making sure that's occurring. And the Life Saving Society is also working on updating their curriculum to kind of have some critters, you know, some animals, things like that added, and also just a rollout plan that we can use in our training sessions with our staff to kind of work towards that transition and identify any areas that need more attention. Thank you.
Okay, great. So moving on, Pender Harbor Aquatic and Fitness Center on page 203, line 625 of the budget. Any questions or comments? We'll go 203 through 204, 205, down to the bottom of page 206. Any questions or comments? Director Lee?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciated the report. I read it through quite well. And the fact I don't have any questions means just how well it was done. So thank you very much.
Okay. So moving on, page 207, we're at Recreation Services in Pender Harbor Aquatic and Fitness Center. On page 207, some KPIs in there. Any questions or comments? Anything on facility bookings or rentals? Moving on to page 208. Multi-purpose rooms. Page 209, Registered Programs and Marketing. Okay, and then moving on to Transit on page 210, our Transit Division, 310. Any questions? Any questions on transit? All right, so we'll start with Director McMahon.
Well, it, I I love the charts, by the way, I mean, we've had them for a while, but I really like the ridership charts and um it's, it's a little perturb- perturbing that we are still like 10,000 riders below what we were pre-COVID. However, I think that's pretty typical across BC, is it not? Uh, and and so we're kind of doing okay compared to everybody else, would that be fair statement?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you for the question. Uh, I would say that's a fair statement, judging from what BC Transit have provided us, we're pretty stable with with other communities that uh BC Transit operates in. Thank you for the question.
Okay. And Director Bemish?
Yeah, I just, Global did an article on that this morning and about transit and about ridership and it's coming back generally, but it's still not recovered to pre-COVID levels yet, but but in most major cities, including Vancouver, it's starting to come back, uh, but we're still probably right there in the, in the same spot as everybody else.
Okay, any other questions or comments on transit from page 210? 211? 212? Moving on to page 213 with Fleet Division, 312. Oh, Director Hiltz?
Thanks, Chair. Um, Refrigeration Handling Certificates, is this a new certification for for staff?
No, that's a question, no, it's not a new certificate, it's just tickets were expiring, so just to stay ahead of that process.
Terrific. Anything else on Fleet Division? And finally, our Ports and Docks, lines 345 and 346. Any questions or comments here? Not seeing any? Great, well, thank you so much, uh, to our Community Services Division, that was, uh, you waited a long time to get through that, but love the new, uh, I think you're hearing that we we're really enjoying the new uh reporting format, so thank you, GM Gangon. And uh, thank you to all of your staff team that is here today. Um, now, we have no communications, no new business, no in camera, so I guess, uh, finally, we're gonna, this Marathon Committee of the whole, we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn, I see that, I see a few seconders and all those in favor. Thank you. Um, and thank you, thank you so much, Shelley, for managing to make it the whole way through. Um, and we have nobody in our audience. Um, were there any questions that came in? Nope. Great, it's finally lunchtime, oh my gosh.